We've got a joint meeting tonight with the Planning Commission. And I know there's an awful lot of people who want to speak. And I really want to give you all an opportunity. But after the hour and a half meeting with them, we have a full council meeting to go after that. And 12 o'clock meetings are not fun. So we're going to try to allow everybody to speak, but in order to do that, we're going to have to cut the three minutes to two minutes. And I think that it should be enough time to allow you to say what you need to say. For those of you that need it here tonight, we have an interpreter. Eliana Rey is going to be the interpreter. So if you're more comfortable in speaking in Spanish, then by all means, please do it. So with that, let's see. I'm going to make sure we do this in the right order. All right. If you want to citizen comments, and this has to do with the mobile home park only. And just know, this is an informational thing for us. We're going to be talking about this more times than this. There's no decision is going to be made tonight. We're just going to be discussing it. So you'll have other opportunities to speak. But we want to make sure that you're all heard tonight. So clerk, please call the first person.
Just wanted to let you all know.
State your name, please, and city.
Sam Green. I'm actually from Olympia, Washington.
Okay.
I wanted to let you know that I work for Rock Northwest. We're Washington State's affiliate of Rock USA Capital. We work with residents and owners of mobile home communities to convert them into resident-owned communities. And I wanted to let you all know that I'm available to meet with anyone who's interested in learning more about the process or wants to look at the feasibility of doing that or just learn more about the Rock program. So please reach out to me if you're at all interested.
You just need to speak into it.
Fred Olson.
And that clock that's running on the screen behind is the amount of time.
I don't know if you're at the right time, but I'd like to talk about the mobile home parks.
Can you speak into the microphone? I think people in the audience will have trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to speak about the mobile home parks and how it's very valuable for the older people. It probably will kill them if they have to move. I just had open-heart surgery, so I need this form of cheaper living. And I think a lot more people are going to start doing that. And I just think wiping out mobile home parks is not the way to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Good evening. My name is Kylan Parks. I live in Lynnwood, Washington, and I am a mobile homeowner. I work for the Association of Manufactured Homeowners, which is a statewide advocacy owner organization for homeowners. And I have been involved with this process with the Planning Commission from the start and have been working with all of the homeowners for about six months now. And I just want to let you know that with these recommendations coming from the Planning Commission, they did decide to not put a zoning overlay as a recommendation. And we would really like for the council to reconsider that as an option as you go in hearing this, because I think that we very much understand this is an affordable housing issue, not just a mobile home park issue. And they're all aware of that. They know Kenmore needs some more affordable housing, because if they were to be displaced, they would want to stay here. And there's no place for them to go with most of their income levels. And also to let you know that these mobile home parks are businesses, which you're very aware of, but they have made a lot of money off the homeowners paying their rent and doing all those things. And even if you preserve, like the two senior communities on the slough, does not mean that they will be kept affordable, as one of them at Inglewood is already many are paying over $1,000 a month with having their own homes. And so they will be priced out. And many of these owners actually own many parks. And the trend is that they come in and buy, they have a park that isn't as nice, and then they fix it up and replace the homes and start raising the rents and make it a different kind of community. So keep that in. Truly try to listen with compassion and sensitivity through this process. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Kenmore City Council. My name is Ishpelle Dickens. I'm a retired attorney who went to law school specifically to get my law degree to advocate for and to work with the most vulnerable homeowners in the state, i.e. people who own their homes and reside in manufactured housing communities. I've been attending and participating in the Planning Commission process. And while a lot of time and effort has been expended trying to come up with a workable solution for the preservation of affordable housing and meeting the requirements of the Growth Management Act, I'm surprised and dismayed that the simplest, most inclusive, and easiest-to-administer option is not before you this evening. I'm talking about mobile home park zoning ordinance. Such an ordinance has been enacted by Snohomish County and the cities of Marysville, Lynnwood, Spokane, and Tomwater. And it even survived a legal challenge from the community owners. When they challenged the Tomwater ordinance, the Court of Appeals ruled in favor of the city of Tomwater. And Bothell and Renton have had mobile home park zones for many, many years. A mobile home park zone is fair in that it treats all existing manufactured housing communities equally. It allows the largest number of affordable homes to be preserved. It ensures the city complies with all Growth Management Act requirements, and it is the easiest for your staff to administer. A mobile home park zone allows community owners the ability to continue operating their profitable businesses. It allows them to sell to other community owners whenever they want. And it provides a level of security for the seniors and low-income families living in the communities. None of the other recommendations provide that security. I urge you to put mobile home park zoning on your list of recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dickens.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Dixon. I currently live in Kenmore Village. I have recently purchased without knowing that there's a possibility of losing my home. It took me years to come up with the money to actually purchase, and now I'm finding out that it's all about selling the property and then rebuilding affordable housing. The problem is, is I'm at that cusp where I make too much to qualify for affordable housing. So everybody's talking about affordable housing for everybody else, but they don't think about the people who are working hard, have actually purchased a home, and now they're going to have it taken away. And say that you don't take it away, then they're going to raise the rent up so high that once again, I can't afford to live. And I can never afford to buy a house without a mobile home where I can save, and it's my own, and I can do anything I want to. In an apartment, every single year, my rent goes up anywhere from $100 to $150. And with this mobile home that I finally have possession of, I can actually live and save and have the dream of potentially owning a home. Even though I don't make that really high dollar amount, I make too much. So there's no middle ground for that middle person. And I either have to get somebody to live in my dining room, which I have in my current apartment that I just vacated, or I can get a mobile home and have affordable living, which apartment housing for a low-income doesn't offer. So please rethink Kenmore Village. It is in a wetland. It does have extra zoning you guys would have to go through. And it's not really, yeah, it's on Everett Highway, but it's not in a zone that a lot of people are going to use. The parking lot is a ways away, and there's already really great transportation. So that's my plea is to rethink it. Kenmore Village, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Valenzuela. I'm a homeowner and resident of Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park. I feel Kenmore could be bragging and celebrating already having these 270 units of affordable housing. These units house the seniors, the vets, the disabled, the low and fixed-income Kenmore residents. To displace these residents would drastically increase homeless due to the luxury unit growth and the nonavailability of affordable housing. The current affordable housing is at the 50% to 80% of the King County median, which is way too high. Any other county housing has a two-year waiting list. These mobile home park owners hope to stay in their homes to protect their investments, their equity. We invite you to come tour with us at the mobile home parks. We will take you to all six parks. We could take you to see the inside of a 1965 homeowner park, a mobile home. And in 1971, we could take you into a 1988 home. We ask that you do the right thing. Protect and preserve our homes with a mobile home park zoning. Be part of the solution, not part of the crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela.
Hi. I'm Clifford Brayden. I'm from the Lake Terrace Court Mobile Home Park here in Kenmore. I'm a senior, age 56. I'm going to lose my entire investment because of new city rezoning of my park. Who will buy my mobile home when I tell them the park is going to be redeveloped? There are very limited spaces in surrounding senior parks, and your income has to be three times the space rent in order to be accepted into the park. Other residents in our park could not afford it and on our very limited income. One resident is a caretaker for her brother, and another has MS. Moving would be a big financial burden on all of our tenants in our park. We ask the city of Kenmore to reconsider more options for our parks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden.
I'm sorry I can't read the name, same address as Mr. Brayden, but unit number four.
I hope what I have to say is better than my handwriting. I have lived...
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, pardon me. Thank you. My name is Harry Perfeder. I live at Lake Terrace Mobile Home Park, Unit Four. I've submitted something in writing to the Planning Commission, a rather extensive document with some unique history for myself. I'm not going to talk about that today, because you can read it. And if you have any questions, if you've read it, be glad to answer those. But what I am going to say, that I think is significant, is eight of the 11 people who reside in that park, in my section of the park, are over 55 years of age. Two of those people are almost completely disabled and unable to work. One has cerebral palsy and is cared for by his elderly sister. The other has MS in the advanced stages. I'm 71, in pretty good health for 71. But I have a problem with credit because of what I've outlined, that I've already supplied. If this park closes, my limited income can't get me into an apartment. I have no place to go. And I'm not sucking my thumb or playing a violin. That's the basic, hard truth. So I'm not alone. There's a gentleman here, I think, an older fellow. He and his wife are in their 80s. They've lived in the park across the street from ours for 35 years. They are on limited income, and they have no place to go. If this council decides to rezone and allow sale, please put a moratorium on it for at least several more years by way of an ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? All right. You're going to need to sign up, but you come speak first, and then you go to the clerk and sign up.
So my name is Dr. Joanna Crocker, and I live in Inglewood East. And for many of these sessions, we've been talking about what happens to all the residents of these parks. And I want to flip this around for a second and ask, if we close parks and people become homeless, what happens to the cities or the jurisdictions these people live in? And I've learned in recent weeks that the majority of many of our homeless encampments are senior citizens. And I've tried to cost this out. Nobody can do it precisely. But every time somebody in our community of seniors becomes homeless, the cost to the local jurisdiction and the state could be anywhere from about $5,000 to $35,000 more per month for each person that ends up out there, depending on the kind of medical conditions that they have and where they might end up. So there are huge costs that could come to the city, the county, the state, if people, more people who are elderly were to become homeless. And thank you very much, all of you, for all these sessions that we've been through together.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Glad to have you speak, but remember to go sign up afterwards.
Hi, my name is Carol Cooney Myers, and I live at Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park down here on the slough. A couple of questions that I have that I would hope that you guys would think about, too, that I have not really heard a lot about with the Planning Commission meetings or any other meetings or notices or anything like that, is some of these people in these parks are going to be displaced. We know this. This is a reality that we have to live with. But how are we going to help them as a community? We can't just put them out on the street. How are we going to, are we going to give them time to, you know? Most of these mobile homes are too old to be moved. State will not allow us to put them on the roads. What are we going to do financially? What are we going to do through support of maybe somebody helping organize a moving thing or something? What can we do as the city of Kenmore to help these people that we know that will be displaced? Help them move on? Help them? We want them to, when they do go, if they have to go, and Heavenly Father, I hope they don't, but if they do, how are we going to make them whole? And as a community, and I can say this, my family's lived here since 1938. As a community and a Kenmore family, we have to look out for these people. And a lot of them are our elders, and we have to respect them and care for them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please go sign up? Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Same goes for you. Come up and speak, and then go sign up.
I am Connie Jones of Lakewood Villa. I would like to tell you that I am 62 years old. However, I have been disabled since 2002. That's many years due to work-related issues. The rent, the insurance, electricity, cable, and such takes over three-fourths of my monthly income. I do not have savings. I do not have a trust fund. I do not have any extra cash anywhere. I would like to ask all of you to please consider your compassion into letting me and all of the others stay in their own homes, because frankly, I don't have any cash to move out on, too. I would be completely homeless, and I do not wish that upon anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Russ Millard. I'm the property manager at Inglewood East Shores. I come today. I've been involved in the process. I object to the idea of spot zoning as being arbitrary and capricious. I don't think our park should be singled out as one of two that is going to be spot-zoned. I don't think that's a good way to manage things. I think it brings on litigation. I don't think it's the right thing to do. Further, we don't have any intention of selling our park, especially not to Rock or anyone else. We also don't intend to redevelop our park. We don't intend to close it. We've been doing this for 40 years. We have never closed a park, never been involved in closing a park, will not be involved in closing a park, and we never will sell it to Rock. So we just want to thank you for the process, but let you know that we're against spot-zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millard. Anybody else? Mr. Millard, please make sure you go sign up. Mr. Millard, if you please sign up. Thank you.
I did actually sign the one that's over there where that gentleman in the T-shirt is.
Oh, that was the wrong one.
Okay. Well, I'll sign the right one then.
Yes, please. Thank you.
My name's Dan Holmes. I am a member, owner, in Inglewood East. And I can tell you what, they don't care. They don't care because, number one, they're going to raise their rates every year. If I decide to leave, no problem. The next guy, he gets a lease. Same problems. They don't care. It's a moneymaker for them. It's their income. I get that. But still, they don't care. Somebody passes away, the estate doesn't want to mess with it, they low-ball offer, come in, little cleanup, little carpet, a little paint, and they sell the house. They've got another source of income. Fine, I'm all for it. But I'm watching my standard of living drop every year. I'm one of the lucky ones. I've got someplace else to go. In four years, I retire, I'm out of here. There's a whole bunch of people can't do it. That's all I got to say. They don't care. Unless you do something about them, they'll do whatever they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Please be sure to sign up. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, we do. If you want to. And we need him to sign up also when he's done.
I already did.
Okay. Must be on the other list.
Hello, my name is Noel. I'm a member of the community of Kenmore Village. Hello, my name is Noel, and I am one of the community members. The community 7021 is around here, around the parking lot.
Can we get his full name, please?
What is your name? Is it complete? Pintor. Noel Pintor. P-I-N-T-O-R.
Thank you.
I want to talk about the problem that we're going to face if we have to move out. Everyone in the community where I live, we all have children. We all have two or three children, and they all go to Kenmore Elementary School. Between 80 and 100 children altogether. So we're all very worried about the children and what's going to happen if we all have And another point is, we also want to know what strategies or benefits or help is the city going to have for some of us if we have to move out? I think that's it for now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pintor. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to be heard?
I haven't signed, but I will do it after. My name is Guadalupe Ceniceros. I have some questions about a paper that we received, I think this weekend, about this meeting. So if I understand correctly, this document that we received just a few days ago, it was saying something about if the mobile home is older than 1977, then our investment is going to be completely lost. We're not going to be able to get any money for that. And I also understand, if I understand correctly, that we're going to have to pay to actually get rid of the mobile home. So mine is a 1974 mobile home, and so my understanding is I'm not going to get any money for it, and then I'm going to have to pay to get rid of it. So what if I just leave? I would have to just leave and leave it behind, because I don't have any money to I was starting to do some renovations early this year, but I had to stop. My house is a disaster now, but I couldn't continue to invest, because I might lose So that's it. I just want some answers. What if I just decide to leave? Am I going to get in trouble? But what are my options? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ceniceros. Lori, you're the one that can answer some of these questions. Can you make arrangements to get with her and answer those, please? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you all. We are all very, very concerned about this. This is why we had the Planning Commission look at it. This is something that has been a real concern about what would happen if the owners decided to sell. We have to have some plans in place. We have to have some understanding of what we can do as a city. And this is what this whole Planning Commission has been about. They've made some recommendations to us. We're going to spend probably a number of meetings going over these recommendations ourselves, trying to figure out what can we do. There's a serious housing crisis around here. We know that. We really don't want you to be part of it. We want to know and understand fully what we can do. And that's why we're studying this. There is no plans for anybody to sell a park. There's no plans for anybody to close a park. There's certainly no plans to boot anybody out. That's not what we're here for. We're here to try to understand. I know the issues with affordable housing and seniors. Fully aware. We all are. We know it's a very, very... We know it's a very, very difficult situation to be in, and it's something that we really want to study and we really want to understand. So I really thank you all for coming out. Your voices have been heard, and we will continue to work on this issue. But thank you, and please know that we are hearing you. All right, with that, then, joint session with the City Council and the Planning Commission, and they're going to go over policy recommendations for mobile home parks. Looks like Ms. Anderson, you were here? And Mr. Anderson? Welcome.
Mr. Sullivan.
I mean, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, he is not Debbie Bent.
Thank you. It's good to see you. And I've heard the news. I certainly wish you all the best, and hopefully we can get a little more work out of you before you retire. But it's good to see you, thank you.
So, good evening. I also want to let you know that Mike Stanger with Arch is here as well, along with, obviously, the Planning Commission. So, for this evening, the Planning Commission is presenting their recommendations for the mobile home parks, and it's my charge to give a brief overview of sort of the process and where, the background on this topic and that kind of thing. It's a summary of the materials that were in your very large packet. But, so I will go over that and then turn it over to Chair Nugent, who I think is going to be the primary presenter for the Planning Commission. Okay, so, the mobile home park recommendations. So this charge came from the Housing Strategy Plans, I'm sure you're aware, and this specific item in the Strategy Plan said, "Consider strategies for preserving existing affordable housing." And there were two sub-points to that. Consider density transfers from affordable properties to areas where additional density has been proposed, and look at a manufactured housing community overlay, using a Bothell's example. So the City Council assigned this project to the Planning Commission, and work began in October on the project, and at around the same time, the City Council put a moratorium on mobile home park redevelopment to allow time to consider various approaches. So there are six mobile home parks in Kenmore. There are five property owners, and there are about 250 homes. So two of the parks, Inglewood East and Lakewood Villa, are on Northeast 175th Street, along the river. There's one off of Bothell Way, and that one is sort of tucked behind, I think there's a restaurant there, it's just to the west of the bowling alley. There are two on Northeast 181st Street. One is Lake Terrace, the other one doesn't have an official name. One on the north side, one on the south side. And then the Lakewood Mobile Home Park is the park that sits just right next to City Hall, in the City Hall parking lot. The two on Northeast 181st Street are owned by the same person, which is why there are only five property owners. So in terms of background, the parks range in size from nine to 78 units. Almost all are owned. We know of only two cases where the homes are rented. In all cases, the pads that the mobile homes sit on are rented. Many of the homes were built prior to 1976 and cannot be moved. From anecdotal information, we know the rents range generally in the area of $600 to $650 a month. Uh-oh. I hear some rumblings. And that new, the Planning Commission asked that we contrast that with new units in Spencer 68, the controlled units, the affordable units. So in Spencer 68, an affordable unit at 50% of median income is about $979 a month. More than half of the manufactured housing residents are low-income, and two of the parks, the ones along Northeast 175th Street, which are Lakewood Villa and Inglewood East, are restricted to those who are 55-plus years old. So the Planning Commission was working off a general philosophy, and I wanted to go over that. First of all, we all know that the housing supply has not increased enough to meet demand, which has resulted in these dramatic rent increases, including the rents charged for the lots in the mobile home parks. And finding affordable housing is a growing challenge for residents, not only of the mobile home parks, but also other families in the area who rent. The Planning Commission felt that rents for everyone will continue to increase unless far more housing units are constructed, and that requires an increase in density. So the Commission was really striving to balance the needs of the residents with the needs of non-mobile home park families who are also lower-income and are interested in more housing supply to stabilize rents. This project had quite a bit of public involvement. We tried to alert everyone. In October, we heard presentations from organizations that represent both homeowners and property owners. We did mailings to all the property owners and to every homeowner in all of the parks. So they received a couple of mailings. We held a January roundtable with property owners and their representatives, and the Planning Commission held a January meeting with homeowners and their representatives. That was in a format where they divided into small groups by mobile home park and answered some questions and gave some feedback. And then we had ongoing citizen comment and correspondence, and all of that correspondence was included in your packet. Finally, the Planning Commission held their public hearing over two nights to try to accommodate everyone. So the recommendations are unique in one way, in that no code amendments are being presented here. The Planning Commission has identified these various options and approaches, and then they have identified some issues for each of them. Once the City Council clarifies the directions that they are interested in, then staff would go back and prepare actual code amendments, if needed, for council consideration. So this is a difficult slide to read, and I want to let the audience know that there are paper copies over on the back table of this, both in English and in Spanish. But the Planning Commission developed a series of criteria to use to evaluate the parks. Size of the park was one thing, how close the park was to existing density, is it consistent with a comprehensive plan vision, they looked at age restrictions, and timelines. We had some redevelopment timelines that were given to us by the owners of the various parks. They also looked at the relative age of the structures and whether there were environmental issues with redevelopment. The bottom line shows the criteria that they, the Planning Commission, used to make their recommendations, and again, this was in your packet. So the recommendations themselves, again, difficult to read on this small slide, but paper, slide, but paper copies available and in your packet. So for two of the mobile home parks, Lakewood Villa and Inglewood East, the Planning Commission recommendation is really focused on long-term preservation, either through purchase of the mobile home park by a preservationist, or through a series of land-use actions, transfer of development rights, or the opportunity to use a fee in lieu from other affordable housing requirements to pay the property owner for the lost density. In both cases, there would be a long-term preservation requirement on the property. For the remaining four, the focus is that there be no city requirement to require preservation. It would remain the choice of the property owner, and again, some are not planning to redevelop right away. But if there were to be redevelopment, then the idea was that at the same number and affordability level of units would be replaced in the new development. And then there was a third option that talked about preservation through incentives. In other words, offering financial assistance or other incentives to the property owner to preserve the park for some period of time in exchange for receiving those incentives. So those, that's a quick outline of the recommendations, and I'm sure Chair Nugent will have comments to go along with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to him.
Thanks, Ms. Anderson. First of all, I want to turn on my mic, and I also want to acknowledge the new council members. We haven't worked as council members with Commissioner, or Councilmember Srebnik, and she knows why I said that, and Councilmember Marshall, welcome. We look forward to working with you. Councilmember Srebnik used to be on our Planning Commission, so I'm going to probably lapse and call her Commissioner from time to time. I apologize in advance. I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson to do something that we have asked her to do virtually every meeting on this issue, because as we heard tonight, and we've heard it most of our meetings, and we see in emails that mobile home park residents submit to us, there's still confusion about what the city is doing here, and I appreciate the mayor trying to clear that up. The Planning Commission and the council, and we got our instructions from the council, we're doing this because the council wanted our input on this. It's a high priority issue. Is not to change the zoning to kick out residents. It's not to change the zoning to allow development. It's to change the zoning to try and preserve the existing housing. Right now, every owner of a mobile home park could sell it, except that there's a moratorium that the city imposed, so that we had time to analyze this without the risk of it being sold before we reached a conclusion. But people seem to think from their comments, some people, I think most people understand this, but some people still think we're trying to allow a new zoning that allows for and encourages redevelopment to close the parks. Lori, do you want to elaborate on that?
I can elaborate a little bit. I will say that the options, all of the options, the intent was to preserve density if possible, either by transferring it to another property, or in the case of option four, building new units to replace the lost units. I'm not sure where else you want me to go with that.
No, that's fine. But I didn't, I wanted to be sure you had a chance to add anything else to that. So, as the mayor said, the whole purpose of these meetings and the ones going forward is to try and balance these conflicting interests in a way that helps the people here preserve their housing or find other housing, if new housing gets built, that they can more likely afford than they would, than they would right now, the way the zoning is. Our goal is to help. As Ms. Anderson said, and as the council knows, this issue is sort of a sub-issue of the affordable housing docket item that the City Council delegated to the Commission, I think in 2016. And the Commission presented our findings and analysis on affordable housing generally in the city of Kenmore in January of 2017. And so we're looking at the mobile home parks as an element of affordable housing, not just for the modifications or potential modifications to zonings in those mobile home parks, but the impact that any rezoning would have on the rest of the housing market in Kenmore and the city's planning and zoning goals. We find that there are four groups with strong interest in this issue. Obviously, the mobile home park residents, and I'm going to refer to them as tenants only because it gets confusing, because they're part owners and part tenants. They rent the pad, they own the structure. Typically, they own the structure. There are a few that the mobile home park owners own and rent also. On top of that, but I'm going to refer to them as tenants, only so it's a little more simplified. And then the mobile home park owners as owners. So obviously, the mobile home park tenants have a very strong interest in this. The mobile home park owners have a very strong interest in this, particularly in rezoning. Another party, and Ms. Anderson alluded to this, and one of the slides did too, are Kenmore renters who don't live in mobile home parks and who far outnumber renters who do live in mobile home parks. Now, are they of the same composition, demographically or economically? Probably not, but there are, in fact, a lot of low-income or moderate-income families renting units in Kenmore who are facing similar, sometimes more grievous hardships than the ones in mobile home parks. We just can't forget about what impact this will have on them, because this is all about affordable housing, and to help one group at the expense of another doesn't really advance the overall city purpose. So we want to think about those interests, too, and we did. And then the fourth entity with a strong interest in this is the city itself, including those on this council and others who participated in designing the current downtown plan and citywide zoning laws. The city's interest is a little more vague, so I'm going to describe it as we see it in a little more specificity. The city's interest is in how do zoning changes to mobile home parks alter whether and how the city can continue to create an urban core that's more walkable and attractive to commercial and higher-density investment? And with respect to any financial contribution that the city might consider making to benefit mobile home park tenants, and we have talked to some extent on the Commission about that, and you will be, I understand, considering some direct financial contribution possibilities. This mobile home park issue obviously involves how much of the city's resources it might spend, and which other city priorities should receive a commensurately smaller amount of city funding, because the city doesn't have unlimited resources. The staff's agenda bill for this issue that came with your packet identifies a number of affordable housing comprehensive plan policy items, as it should. But there are other comprehensive plan policy items that are also affected, such as policies relating to economic growth and a vibrant, walkable downtown. The City Council adopted a 2018-2019 list of goals of its 10 highest priorities. You're obviously familiar with that. The first five of these goals are listed in bold font. The fifth of these goals in bold font reads, "To update and continue to implement the Economic Development Plan with an emphasis on the following key points. One, advance public access to water. Two, create a vibrant, walkable downtown. Three, attract new businesses and support existing businesses. And four, promote the image of Kenmore." The seventh item on this list is to increase affordable housing stock. So affordable housing stock is obviously a high priority for this council, but the Commission also knows that other high and even higher priorities will be affected, and that the impact on those priorities should be part of this analysis. So that focuses a little on the first group, and the city's, I should say, the city's interest in this issue. The third group, which I alluded to before, the Kenmore renters who are not living in mobile home parks are affected because, and this goes back to the first presentation we made on affordable housing about 18 months ago. This is, as we said then, an economic issue, and it requires an economic analysis. There are multiple members of this Planning Commission who have a background in economics. As part of our previous affordable housing work, we looked at articles and research regarding housing prices and housing policies. We stated then and continue to agree with what we believe to be the majority of economists and legislative analysts on this issue, and they have stated that the Seattle area and similar cities face a severe housing shortage, as Ms. Anderson said. In the Seattle area, high-wage job growth in particular, and a perceived high quality of life in this area in general, have led to large and continuing population growth. This population growth has created a much higher demand for housing, and this demand has far exceeded supply. Therefore, rents in this area have gone up dramatically in the last seven years. Interestingly, however, housing market forces in this area have changed since we last presented on this issue 18 months ago. The increase in housing demand and housing prices, especially rents, has stimulated an historic increase in multifamily rental unit construction. Builders have constructed more than 40,000 new housing units in Seattle in the last four years, and there are about 35,000 new units in the permitting and construction process now. Many of you may have seen this, of those on the council, but I have in my hands an article from the Seattle Times dated April 10th, the headline for which reads, "As New Apartments Flood the Market, Seattle Area Sees Smallest Spring Rent Hikes in a Decade." The article points out that rents, in fact, have actually declined since last summer, when they hit their peak. They're about leveled to about where they were last year this time. If I may.
Can we hold it down? We're really trying to, we understand the frustrations you feel. We know what the rent situation is in the region. Please, let him continue.
These price changes are prevalent not just in new downtown Seattle apartments, but in older apartments and apartments in the suburbs. A research paper from the California Legislative Analyst's Office, which advises the California State Legislature, explains the filtering effect of expensive new apartments, such as those in San Francisco and the new buildings in downtown Seattle. New apartments rent for a premium. The tenants who fill the new, more expensive apartments leave behind their less expensive apartments, and this process continues filtering down to more and more affordable units. Also, today's new apartments... Also, today's new apartments depreciate quickly, much like a new car that eventually become affordable themselves, relatively affordable. The more recent articles, such as the one from April 10th in the Seattle Times, support the California Legislative Analyst's Office analysis. That analysis, in fact, was published in a lot of national newspapers, including the Washington Post and the Seattle Times a few years ago. So market forces are changing the housing issue even now, and those economic forces are part of the reasons for our recommendations to the council. In short, the planning commission has recommended allowing redevelopment of certain, I should say continuing to allow redevelopment of certain mobile home parks to provide more housing supply to benefit all Kenmore tenants. Having said that, the commission agrees that the greatest immediate hardship from redevelopment of mobile home parks falls on the mobile home park tenants, and the most immediate hardship from changes to the mobile home park zoning would fall on the mobile home park owners. So the commission has recommended options one and two for mobile home parks that are removed from the city's urban core, as Ms. Anderson said, are located by the Semamish slough, and they are already developed to near capacity under current zoning and are also near an environmentally sensitive area, which itself may further limit redevelopment. As for mobile home parks in the city's urban core, the planning commission recommends upzoning to encourage eventual redevelopment of existing mobile home parks, but that this upzone include density bonuses that set aside new affordable housing units. This is option four. The goal would be to provide replacement housing for displaced mobile home park tenants as part of the new developments. The obvious challenges to this proposal are, one, inducing builders to invest in these projects with these conditions. We have density bonuses throughout this city, and not many of them have been acted on. Two, another challenge is, given that many, if not most, mobile home park tenants are low-income, i.e. they make near or even less than 50% of King County median income, how affordable are these new affordable units for the displaced mobile home park tenants and whether they are of comparable size to the lost mobile home park units? And three, the challenge is, where do displaced mobile home park tenants live during the time gap between the closing of the mobile home park and the opening of the new housing development? We got this project last October. We've held a lot of meetings, extra meetings, with a lot of public input, and we know this is still incomplete. So we want to just recognize that we are not giving you the final product that we normally do. It's only because this issue is so complex, and we tried hard to get as much input as we could. So we realize we're leaving you with a lot of work yet to be resolved. As for alternatives that were declined by this planning commission, the one most often raised by advocates of mobile home park tenants, and was again raised in citizen comment tonight, was to impose a preservation zoning overlay on certain mobile home parks, such as was done in Bothell, Tumwater, and other Puget Sound area cities. The planning commission declined that proposal for multiple reasons. One, to simply downzone mobile home parks and remove development rights. Without elements in that zoning to mitigate the economic loss to mobile home park owners would impose severe hardship on the mobile home park owners to try, in an effort to try and remedy a quasi-public problem, affordable housing, that the mobile home park owners did not create. In fact, the mobile home park owner's choice to invest in mobile home parks has provided affordable housing to many, if not most, of the lowest-income families in the city and has done so for decades. To simply take away these development rights that existed at the time they purchased these parks would punish people who have, whether intentionally or not, regardless of their motives originally, they have reduced the hardship of increasing housing costs. It would also have the likely negative unintended consequence of discouraging future housing investors from investing or building mobile home parks or other affordable housing units in Kenmore. That would then leave, in the future, lower-income citizens with even fewer affordable housing options. Our understanding is that no new mobile home parks have been constructed in the Puget Sound region in the last 10 years. Staff can correct me on that. There may be one somewhere out there, but we've got these overlays that are extremely protective of mobile home parks, which has its upside, of course, but it seems to have, perhaps, discouraged investment in similar kinds of housing in this area. That's been a loss to those who would otherwise have that option. So that's a reason why we didn't adopt that policy, and I bring that up because that was so strongly advocated by the residents and their advocates. As Ms. Anderson said, the reasons for adopting the recommendations we're giving you are specified in one of the attachments to your materials, and she alluded to that in the overhead slide. Finally, the planning commission has discussed with staff, and staff has consulted with the city attorney regarding the legality of mobile home park preservation overlays. In the council materials were emails between the staff and the city attorney that provided the city attorney's analysis of the law and the leading case on this issue, Laurel Park versus City of Tumwater. In that case, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that the Tumwater mobile home park overlay, which downzoned certain mobile home parks to prohibit previously allowed development, was constitutional. The city attorney opined that this indicated that a mobile home park overlay in Kenmore would also be legal. The planning commission had not received copies of those emails and only received them with the materials for this meeting. I've read the Laurel Park case, and the question of whether Kenmore mobile home park overlay would be unconstitutional, an unconstitutional taking from the mobile home park owners in the current Kenmore housing market appears to be a much closer question than the Laurel Park case. So if and when the Kenmore City Council considers an outright preservation overlay ordinance without mitigating elements, it should revisit the taking issue in light of the differences between the Tumwater housing market and the Kenmore housing market. In the Laurel Park case, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals found that no taking took place largely because the mobile home park owners in that case, and I'll read from the case, "offer very little evidence of economic effect resulting from enactment of the ordinance. At best, the owners have presented information that reflects an economic loss of less than 15% with respect to one of the three properties and no effect on the other two plaintiff properties or the properties of the remaining affected mobile home parks." But bear in mind, that was Tumwater, not Kenmore, and the opinion was issued in 2012, not 2018. In fact, the case to reach the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals was probably filed in the federal district court, the trial court, at least two years before to reach that point. That would bring us back to 2010. The housing market was in decline. So we have a very different city with a very different housing market right now. It is an apples-to-oranges situation, and I would not rely on the Laurel Park case to assume that an ordinance would simply be deemed constitutional. I have to point out, too, that the composition of the federal courts has changed somewhat since 2012. It's changing even tonight, and it's probably changing more in the direction of finding a taking under a situation like this. It's possible, of course, that a mobile home park overlay ordinance that's very protective could be carefully tailored if it were included with tolerant development options for the mobile home park owners. So again, that's the reasoning behind our recommendations tonight, and I invite questions from the council.
One more statement, then we'll go to questions. I understand that most of the people living in the mobile home parks are cost-burdened. You're spending more than a third of your income on rents. We know that. Our main goal with our housing strategy is to preserve what we've got. Affordable housing in the region, in King County and in Kenmore, is not even close to being enough of what we need. And the problem is, we need more down at the 30% median income level, and we don't have it, and no builder will build it. We have to figure out a way to preserve what we have and get more built. That's the assumptions we're working under. Please, don't think that we want you gone. We don't. You're an important part of this community. We need to figure out how to preserve what we have. Deputy Mayor. Oh, Councilmember Curtis.
So first, a question for staff. When was the downtown commercial and downtown residential zoning put in place?
I believe those were put in place in 2003, at the time the downtown plan was finished.
All right, thank you. So I just want to clarify what I think I understand. So if we do nothing, the city does nothing, and the mobile home park owners do nothing, then everything stays just like it is now, except for the yearly increases that's the pressure in the whole Puget Sound. Is that correct?
If they choose to not do anything, correct.
And then if the city does nothing, but the mobile homeowner chooses to sell and develop, then it's the same as it's been since 2003? So nothing's changed recently. Is that correct?
Right, for a couple of, not all of them are in downtown commercial or downtown residential.
Correct.
But those in the core that are in downtown commercial and downtown residential, I don't think there's been any zoning change in those two zones.
So I think what I'm trying to do is make the same point that Councilor Doug Nugent was making, is that if we do nothing, it's really up to the owners of these mobile home parks what happens, and we are trying to help the problem. We're not trying to suddenly throw people out. We really, it's a tough problem to solve, and there's no really, I was a medical doctor for 35 years, and I used to tell people, "If your problems were easy, you wouldn't come to me. You would have solved them already." And this is one of those. If it was easy, we wouldn't have been working on it a year. This is a really challenging, complicated set of needs with lots of different people. So we are seriously taking everybody's input, and thank you, commission, for working so hard on this.
Deputy Mayor.
Kind of going off what Councilmember Curtis was saying, when were the, you know, we talk a lot about, or at least Chair Nugent talked a little bit about, about what owners of the parks had expectation-wise when they purchased their property. Do we know when the properties in the downtown core were purchased? Were they owned by their current owner before 2003 in the upzone?
I think, and this is from memory, I'm not sure this is accurate, but I believe that the park next to City Hall, Lakewood, was purchased more recently, within the last 10 or 15 years, whereas I believe that the two on Northeast 181st Street were purchased many years ago. Like, you heard one person, I think that property owner actually developed those parks and hasn't, it's been the same ownership.
Okay. And I just have a small statement to say, too. I want to thank the planning commission for all their work, because I know, I came to one of the meetings in January, February, when you had the different tables set up for each park.
Yeah.
And I watched that, and that was quite a scene to watch, and
It was.
You know, kudos to you for doing that. I'm not sure if I could have sat among those tables and
Kudos to you for coming, and I saw Councilmember Shrubnik there, too.
Yeah.
It's a lot to take on, but it was our effort to try and hear from everybody.
No, it was great. I mean, the public process you guys have gone through is pretty extraordinary for what we've done in Kenmore, and I really appreciate all of that.
Thank you.
I know, I know that that could not have been a fun evening for any of you. It had to have, you put a lot into it, so thank you very much for all of that and for this work. I do want to say, though, I was a little disappointed when I first saw this and saw that there was no overlay. To me, frankly, it just seems like, as the mayor said earlier, you know, our easiest strategy for affordable housing is preserving what we have. And I recognize all of the other, the push and the pull in the market and all of that that we're dealing with, but the easiest way for us to especially address the stuff in the 30% to 50%, 60% AMI is preserving current housing that we have that fills that market. And our goal isn't to bring down, at least when we're talking about affordable housing, isn't to bring down or slow the increase in market rent, although at some point in 30 or 40 years, that does bleed down to affordable. Our goal here is to, you know, preserve and grow stuff at the lower end, and frankly, at the lower end, the only way that gets built is through a massive government subsidy or preservation of housing structures like we have here. I, for one, you know, I've been, I've looked around at some of the other communities, and I've kind of seen how things have worked out in Bothell and other places, and it seems like things are going okay with the overlays there. I am in favor, frankly, of doing overlay to all, to all the perks, frankly, just to put a stake out there. You know, I understand that, you know, during citizen comment, it sounds like we were already threatened with litigation, so that's a fun way to start the day. But I think, at the end of the day, if I have to stand with the owners of the parks or with the folks who own the homes on the parks who are struggling to get by, I'm going to stand with the owner, I'm going to stand with the homeowners of the parks. I don't, I don't see any way that we go forward that doesn't displace folks, except through an overlay, so that is what I will be pushing for. At the end of the day, it will be an overlay for the current parks. But I appreciate all the work you've done there.
I understand.
You've done a lot of thought.
I respect your differences here. I do want to say a couple of points in response to that. The overlay, first of all, our proposal for two of these parks, two of the biggest, doesn't adopt a strict prohibition, but it does preserve the long-term use of the parks as mobile home parks in various ways. While balancing those interests, and one of the interests that we balance is one you didn't mention, the hardship it would impose on the owners of those parks who've done a public service essentially for decades by providing this affordable housing. They didn't cause this problem. They've helped this problem. They would be severely punished by an overlay that you're, I think that you're proposing. The staff's materials included a grid that measured, and it has to do this by extrapolation, of course, the loss of economic value to these parks if that kind of overlay were imposed. The total loss to the owners of these parks was $12.6 million. It's 45% of the current economic value of the property. We, as a commission, cannot accept as fair and balanced a proposal like that that would have that kind of hardship on a group that has helped the problem for decades. So that alone, put that off the table for us. The other problem is, there is unfortunately, it'd be great, you know, that phrase win-win gets kicked around all the time in politics and business and everything else. It's very, very rare that it really happens. When we set aside, we as a city, certain areas in favor of certain groups, mobile home parks for those residents, or seniors for certain residents, or something like that, we reduce further the amount of buildable land for more housing supply, which is, as we've seen economically, has had the biggest impact on stabilizing rents in this area. So I would disagree, and I think the commission would agree, that you're saying the only way to help really low-income people is through massive government subsidies or construction. This has had more impact locally, that is, the increase in supply in the market than anything I've seen, or that I think the economists have said, to help improve the cost of housing in this area, and it wasn't government subsidies and government construction. There are people not in mobile home parks that are also facing severe hardships. They get displaced, but it's not as public. They get displaced when they get a notice of rent increase. They're not part of a collective like the mobile home parks. But there are far more people having to leave their housing because of that notice of rent increase, because there's a lack of supply of housing, than there are people in the mobile home parks. Those are the interests we balance, and that's why we've come up with a compromise. And I want to point out, too, and you've heard this tonight, we're getting criticized from both sides. The owners don't like what we propose, the tenants don't like what we propose, and we've said throughout this process, at least as far as the commission's concerned, nobody's going to get everything they want, because we are balancing. Thanks.
Councilmember Marshall.
Well, thanks to the commission and to the residents here tonight, both for their very hard work, and the commission for an intricate number of factors, I think, it considered all throughout its evaluations, and it's pretty complex. And the homeowners for being here and for putting up with the And the homeowners for being here and for putting up with the process and getting to the process time and time and time again for your interests. My kids go to school... Well, one goes to school at Kenmore Elementary, and many of his classmates reside in the Lakewood Mobile Home Park. That's a large portion of sort of where I'm coming from. But I have a number of questions that might be directed either to staff or to the commission. And there's about eight of them, so I thought I might just read them off very briefly, condensed, and then you can answer as you see fit. That'd be great.
Take your time.
Okay.
Read each one off.
Okay.
Because I think we're all interested.
Okay. So, and as you say, I mean, I think the most important thing is that Commissioner Nugent mentioned this is still something of a work in progress. It's certainly a result of a ton of effort, but it's still a work in progress and something that we can try to work together on. A brief summary, very brief summary, of the underlying zoning for each park, so that we get a better sense of costs, benefits, of potential loss or value added. That would be great. How long has Bothell's zoning overlay been in place? And there was another jurisdiction that was mentioned. Had that been challenged? What would the commission see as advantages? If you could just potentially imagine, what could be an advantage of a zoning overlay?
Could we get those questions answered before you go on?
One at a time. Okay. No problem. What... Okay. So, then the underlying zoning of each park.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to staff.
Right. So, I think the easiest place... Where's my last slide here? Okay. All right. It's not here. We do have that information, and I can roughly tell you. Lakewood Villa and Inglewood East, the two senior parks, are zoned R-24, which is residential 24 units to the acre... Or, I'm sorry, those are actually R-12. Those two are R-12. It's the one on Bothell Way, Kenmore Village over here, that is zoned R-24. And that one also is in the area of the TOD overlay. The one on Northeast 182nd Street is downtown residential. And the one... The two on Northeast 181st Street are... The one on the south is zoned downtown commercial. The one on the north is primarily downtown commercial, but also has a little bit of downtown residential at the north end of the property. So, I think that is all six.
And what's the maximum residence for downtown commercial?
The current residence for downtown commercial is 48.
Thanks.
And for downtown residential, it is also 48. And in many of these zones, there's a provision, if you're providing affordable housing, to go to a higher density. But those are the base densities.
Okay. And then, how long has Bothell's overlay been in place? And was there another jurisdiction that was mentioned?
The Both... The... Do you want to get it? The Bothell overlay?
So, that we've referred to two different overlays. One is an overlay that actually comes almost with your incorporation, which could be applied in the downtown zones. It's available in a variety of different zones. The actual TDD/OD overlay was probably finalized about five years ago. So, there's two different overlays that we're referring to when we say you can go higher.
Okay.
That's with Bothell?
The Bothell... I believe the Bothell overlay has been in place for many years. I want to say it's been like 20 years. We...
So, it's not a mobile home park overlay per se?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Right. And that one's been in place for a really long time. In fact, we tried to go back and find the original materials, and it was old enough that they couldn't... The files were not available. The Tumwater case, the Tumwater overlay, is more recent, and that was the one that was the subject of the court case. I just want to point out that in the city attorney emails, there was a specific discussion of downtown residential and downtown commercial related to this. So, it wasn't just in the residential zones, but he also looked at the commercial and downtown residential zones.
Thanks. And if the commission wanted to address... You could imagine what might be advantages of an overlay or its various permutations.
Yeah. And I'll... You know, there's no dispute, I think, that there's one huge advantage to an overlay. The residents would stay in the mobile homes. And it's very attractive, obviously. The city of Tumwater thought that was so compelling that they're willing to impose that ordinance. And the other cities, Bothell and Lynnwood... Bothell, if it's a 20-year-old ordinance, then they weren't in the context of this housing market, so they didn't really wrestle with the kind of issues we're wrestling with now. But yeah, that's... We've got, as I said, four parties with strong interest in this. It would be a windfall for one of the four parties and a big loss, probably, for at least two of the other three. And as far as the city's concerned, it would radically alter their downtown plan to simply preserve all the parks in and around City Hall, which the city has designed over 20 years to be its core, to be a place with high density, that's walkable, that's close to transit, that has commercial investment, has a bigger economy. We have a very small economy. We'd like to build on that, as you guys have led the charge and your predecessors. I also need to point out, there's not a lot of buildable land in Kenmore. It's a city of steep slopes and wetlands. So, if you take off the table, areas like the parks around City Hall that are buildable and in the core, you've left very little for investors to work with. And that only means the prices of the existing housing goes up. It's a supply and demand function that's being borne out.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And is the $12 million or estimated...
Yeah.
$12 million loss in value estimated on the existing zoning for... Was that all the parks?
Yeah. That's the sum of... And there's a chart, and Ms. Anderson can address this at more length if you like. But some parks lose like $4 million, and some parks lose $660,000. But the sum of all those would be about $12.6 million. And again, we're working with some assumptions there, because we're extrapolating on the values. But it's roughly half the economic value. And I point out that in the Laurel Park case from Tumwater, the court was saying, "Well, the owners haven't shown an economic loss of more than 15%." And that was one park, and the others didn't show any economic loss. Well, we're looking at 45%, okay? That might trigger the court to say, "This has crossed the line into a taking." And it's not to say that an overlay can't work. In fact, we're proposing an overlay for a couple of those parks that focus on preservation. But we also try to mitigate the hardship on the owners by having a TDR proposal, or a fee-in lieu proposal, or a utility incentive proposal that makes them want to stay, continue this use as mobile home parks, and lose less money if and when they sell it or redevelop it.
Could you summarize the infrastructure loan concept?
I think Ms. Anderson could...
Yeah.
More effectively than I.
Okay. So, one... One of the concepts we heard when we met with the property owners was that the infrastructure in many of the parks was old enough that it really needed repair and updating. And so, the notion of an incentive might be an infrastructure loan to a mobile home park property owner to improve the infrastructure in their park in exchange for a commitment to preserve the park for some period of time, a comparable, whatever was deemed comparable period of time.
Is that a loan from whom?
Well, that is probably a direct assistance discussion, although I suppose a loan from... There might be other opportunities for loans. Arthur will maybe have some ideas. Next, at your meeting next Monday, on the 16th, we're going to talk about some of the direct assistance financial strategies that have been discussed in tandem with these options. So, we'll have kind of a primer on these things, and we may get into more detail then that packet we just have gone out, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. And doesn't the Lakewood... Is it the Lakewood Mobile Home Park that has the most number of people? Inglewood East?
I think it depends on whether you're counting people or you're counting mobile homes. So, the...
People.
People... It may be that Lakewood, which has a fewer number of mobile homes, but has a large number of children, we may have more actual people in the park.
And does the... Our Spanish-speaking neighbors... Isn't the Lakewood Mobile Home Park mostly where a substantial number of our Spanish-speaking neighbors live?
That's my understanding. There are a number of Spanish-speaking residents at the one on Bothell Way as well that we have heard from over the course of the project.
And to the commission, if we were to, you know, think about... Or if we were to ask you, "How might we move up in option ranking any one of the lowest-ranked parks? What trades, trade-offs, or effects would that have? Or how could that be done? What would you see for options for moving things up?"
I have to say, I don't know what you mean by rank and up.
Oh, the...
How are we ranking and what's considered up?
In the diagram you made with the checks that has like options 1, 2, 3, 4...
Right. I'm looking at the grid.
Ranging in amount of assistance from the city and protection for the park...
Yeah.
Down to very little protection for the park or just relocation assistance.
Right. And again, councilmember, you want to know how do we... What's up? And which parks are you thinking of?
Up would be more protection.
Okay. And you're asking, for the parks that have less protection, what would it take to get more protection? Or why wouldn't we propose more protection?
I think the rationale seems clear, to the extent that you look through all of your criteria.
Right.
But if we wish to, look at options for moving one up for more protection, what checks or what trade-offs and advantages or disadvantages might you see?
Well, I think the biggest... I mean, I think I understand where you're going. And I think the biggest distinction between the parks in the urban core and the parks on the slough is that it would radically undermine the downtown plan that the city has worked on for a couple decades. You could preserve them. You could have... You could take options 1 and 2, and you can put them on the parks around City Hall. I just don't see... First of all, there'd be... It's zoned for more density, so we'd never get there. That's a loss of supply that would only put pressure on rents in the area to be higher and would burden people who don't live in mobile home parks. And a lot of those would get displaced. We just don't see them or hear from them. But even more so, you know, the city has worked very hard for decades to build a bigger economy. There are a lot of things we don't have in Kenmore. People got to drive to LFP to go to the hardware store. They got to drive to Woodenville to go to a nursery or, you know, a garden store. I mean, most... A lot of stuff we don't have here that we'd like to have here. We're on the tip of Lake Washington. You know, that is a hot, desirable, beautiful place to be, and we're not fulfilling our potential here. And virtually all the other cities on Lake Washington are or have. Now, there are reasons completely outside this council's control that explain that. I won't mention Cement Plant by name, but in any event, there are some challenges that we have that we inherited, and I know the council's working on that. But to take, you know, this chance to build our... And live up to the vision that this and previous councils have for building an economy, for building a real downtown, is a very high price to pay. And that's why we made that distinction.
And any thoughts on how to move any number of the options up? You know, that's my last question.
Yeah. And I... You know, it's a reasonable question. I just... We wrestled with that. If it were easy, we would've done it, just like Dr. Curtis said. But I will say this. If you look at the Lakewood Park, Mobile Home Park, that was one where a majority of the commissioners said, "You know, we can do something other than upzone and set aside affordable housing units." That is one where we recommended the possibility of incentives to preserve. Not mandatory, not TDRs, but incentives that would induce the owner to continue the mobile home park current use. And that's... Because it is downtown, you're giving up, even with that, you're giving up an opportunity to develop a very big, well-located piece of property that could really add something to the city's economy and image and walkability and transit-oriented philosophy. But we felt, you know, that some degree of preservation for that park was important enough that we made that one of our recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Curtis.
So, I think some more information on the Bothell overlay would help me. A map showing where they are. I'm particularly interested if they have any in the downtown core area, because that's one of the big differences, I think, that exists. And also, maybe a proportion of how much in Kenmore Mobile Home Park area compared to total area of Kenmore compared to Bothell. We're a small city, six square miles, and I think that creates some restrictions on us that maybe a larger city doesn't have. So, just more information, maps, and some area calculations on Bothell compared to us.
Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Shrubnik.
First of all, I'd like to say thanks for your work on this, because I think it goes without saying that this is probably one of the more emotional issues that we have to deal with on the city council and with the Planning Commission. And it's also vitally important that we try to create and strike a reasonable balance. And I think what I really appreciate is a couple of things. One, that you didn't treat them all the same, because downtown in the core is a little different, whether it's because it's the TOD or whatever. It is different. And so, I think it's reasonable to at least look at them differently. I also appreciate the economic perspective, because... And I'm not talking about personal economics. I'm talking about economics, supply and demand, and the value of having long-term... And a long-term economic perspective on how these things play out. And there is a direct relationship between supply and demand, and it's a reason it's a fundamental economic formula. And so, I think you've tried to strike a reasonable balance, and I'm very interested in knowing more about kind of what the assistance may be for whether it's infrastructure improvements, whether it's relocation, whether it's length of notification, if a park is changing hands or development. Those are things that I think are interesting, and I'm very interested in learning about. I also feel... I do feel quite passionate about one aspect of this, in that this isn't a burden that the homeowner... The mobile home park owners created. And I think we have to... And I think you struck this as a balance in your recommendations or in your update. But I think we have to remember that this is a community issue. It's a society issue, and it absolutely is not fair to put any burden, or at least the majority... I should say, maybe there is some component or some percentage is reasonable to look at. But it is a community issue, and it's a society issue. And it needs to be looked at and gone through with that perspective in mind. And I believe you have that understanding, and that's important, how I perceive it, because, you know, to me, it almost doesn't matter when these purchasers bought their property. What matters is they bought an investment, just like somebody buys an apartment building or somebody buys any other investment. Yes, it's investments that's dealing with people's lives, but there's... It's set up that way. There's a reason these pads are rented and not owned by the tenants that live there. And so, we have to consider that this is a community issue as much as it is an individual one. And then, I do have a question on the overlay, and specifically Bothell, since it's 20 years. Generally, I'm not in favor of the overlay, because I do... I think it places the burden on the property owner in an unduly proportionate perspective of it. But I would like to know where overlays have been put in. Is there a deterioration of the infrastructure? Because just like, you know, it reminds me of like what rent control does in some communities where they use rent control, where you then lose the incentive to invest and maintain a property that maybe you typically would've done to a higher level. And if some of these properties are nearing the end of their economic life, of their infrastructure... are nearing the end of their economic life, of their infrastructure, it, you know, although it may make sense to do a loan to improve the infrastructure or provide assistance, it also may be really throwing good money after bad if the long-term development plan is a higher density and increased supply. And so that's just something that I'd be curious to know if there's been problems on that, or how that has been resolved. And I think that's... Just reviewing my notes. I would say that's pretty much all I have right now, but I do think you are, at least from what I can tell, you're heading in what I appear to see as a good, or a reasonable balance direction.
Thank you. And I do want to, your comments bring to mind something else, and that is the proposals, this commission's proposals for the Mobile Home Parks on the slough, which are more preservation-directed. But they, I think it's, I think it's helpful, as you kept using the word balanced, to see that as a balance. I mean, the Mobile Home Park owners are still paying a high price. It's not like we let them off the hook. They don't have, you know, right now, they could, without a moratorium, they could sell at fair market value, and the staff has itemized what they think that is to virtually anybody. They have a broad pool of buyers. They probably have people knocking on their doors to talk about buying it. Under the proposals we've presented, their pool of buyers declines radically. They've really only got the tenants if they organize and get a loan, and, you know, that's a big lift for the tenants, of course. But that means they've got one buyer there, or maybe a public agency steps in, helps the tenants, or independently buys the property. Or they've got this fee and lieu, this very untested alternative compensation model, which are called transfer of development rights, TDRs, or fee and lieu from parties who develop elsewhere in the city and contribute to the city in exchange for getting density bonuses. First of all, TDRs have not been tried around here, except in the environmental context, to preserve environmentally sensitive areas. Now, the staff materials, and I think my colleagues would agree, had something in there that kind of surprised me. They said it's actually been done in Seattle? Because we had asked, and during our discussions, we didn't know that, and they probably didn't know that. But I guess they came across how it's been done. So maybe there is a workable model there. But it's, at best, it's a pretty new, untested kind of thing around here. And the thing about it is, that we struggled with was, where else in Kenmore would you give a density bonus, and where else is it likely to happen, so that they get enough money, the developers, get enough value from the density bonus, to contribute all this money to the city in fee and lieu payments that would offset this 12 million, or, it would be less than that under our proposals, because we're talking about options 1 and 2 only for the slough properties. But there's still millions of dollars that would have to be recovered by those owners through this fee and lieu kind of program, which we haven't really seen. You know, it hasn't happened yet in a really hot market. The market's actually cooling right now, for those who are watching, not just in rents, but in single-family residences. It may be a while before it gets back into the go-go mode that we've seen. And if we're not getting it now, it's going to be a long time. So that's a huge economic cost to the homeowners, even under our proposal. That's what we mean. You know, they're still paying a price, even though they've done a good thing for the city for decades. But we are very cognizant of the hardship on the tenants. So that's, there's a balance there. Nobody's walking away with, without a lumps on, you know, or taking some lumps on this. Yeah, and think, you know, think about that. As you know, from your professional experience, having a much smaller pool of buyers, or taking a much longer time to sell something, means you're going to get a much lower price. And that's a hardship, even under the best-case scenario that they would have to bear.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, first, I want to thank the planning commission for their really thoughtful, careful work. I really appreciate it. I read it thoroughly. It took many hours, and it was well worth it. I appreciate the range of approaches that you took, and how you took into consideration the various characteristics of the parks, that they're not all the same. And for example, the parks along the river are already at over 80% of the allowable density. So for example, for those, there would be a little reason to support changing the use, because there'd be almost no increase in the affordable units that could be realized from that now or in the future. And those two parks alone represent half of the 250, approximately 250 Mobile Home Park units in the city. So I just want to say that was, I thought all of that information, putting that all together, taking all of the input, deliberating in the way you do, you did, was really terrific. So to move forward, I'm struggling with, of course, the balance that everybody else has said, and, you know, at least, at least, if not more, for different sets of interests. One is the residents who have spoken so eloquently today, and in writing, and in other hearings, who have made it clear they want to stay. They've put down roots, no question about it. And they need affordable options, whether it's in the same structures that they're in now, or others. We've got the park owners who have also been very clear about their interests. Some, although not all, want to develop their properties in different ways, and obtain more value out of the property that they purchased. But I personally, I also feel really compelled to represent a couple other groups who haven't had as much voice in this process. One of us mentioned tonight, and those are other residents, current and future, who are not Mobile Home Park residents, but who have very low incomes and need options. And one way to help those individuals is to have a lot more affordable units. And that's, I think, a struggle that we need to reckon with, as well as retaining at least some portion of our existing options, affordable options. And then the fourth interest hasn't been represented here. And having sat on the very first planning commission of this city about almost 20 years ago now, you know, I was involved in hearing from many, many, many residents about what is their vision for the city. And the zoning that, and the comp plan vision for this city and for its downtown in particular, was shaped by those early meetings and has persisted. And that is for, you know, mixed use, higher density, with lots of affordability in our downtown. So I, you know, I also feel compelled to represent the voices of those many, many people that had input into that process as well. And there has to be some balance, and we need to do what we can to help make people whole. If some portion of resident owners end up being displaced by any of these processes, what can we as a city do to help? I asked staff in the planning commission a lot of questions in advance, so I have fewer tonight. But I do have one question that came from some of the written, one of the written comments, and I don't remember exactly who wrote it, was a citizen input. So, and that, and, so, you know, other than helping make people whole, there's a lot of options for that, and I think we need to explore every single one, whether that's supplementing what the state provides, whether that's figuring out if there's ways to move at least some of the units, if they have to be moved, and I know a lot of them can't be. So, but just really exploring every single option that is available to the city. But my question has to do with a variant on, and I don't even know what a name would be, but it's a variant on the TDR option. And that would be allowing owners, and this is Mobile Home Park owners, to purchase units in other existing complexes that are not currently affordable, and essentially making them affordable, in other words, reducing the rents to meet the requirements. Or does the TDR idea have to be in new development? And the reason that I think that's kind of a, kind of an out-of-the-box idea, is the option would give us affordable units a lot more quickly. And it would also help that if there is any sort of relocation in an interval while construction is occurring, that that could help that as well. And I'd also want to echo Milton's question, and I think Brent's too, about learning more about the Bothell overlay. How does it work? What was the estimates of the economic impact on the park owners? Was there any, yeah, analysis of that done? Was there any court challenges, that kind of thing? So those are my questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Just two minor points. One, just, I wanted to flag something for staff. We had a, I was reading through all the correspondence that was provided as part of this agenda packet. And one of the pieces that caught my eye, I can't remember who it's from, but it is from, I think, one of the lawyers or representatives of one of the parks on 175th. They brought up ordinances in Seattle and Sea-Tac, which require park owners to submit mobile home park relocation plans to the city prior to giving residents notice. If, at the end of the day, we end up with a solution that doesn't protect the parks, I would really like us to look at that as a further protection going forward in Kenmore, so that folks have as much notice as possible. And the park owners have really put thought into what that plan looks like, and it's very clear to everybody involved, the city, the residents, the owners, all the stakeholders, so.
Right. That actually was part of discussed under option for, the planning commission also raised the issue of a relocation plan.
Okay.
And considering that, if option 4 were...
Okay. Because I think it sounded like a pretty great idea, just on the face of it. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
So I have a question. It'll be a tougher one, and I think Mr. Sullivan is going to have to try and answer this at some point. And I don't expect an answer off the top of your head. In dealing with the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, dealing with JRC over the years, what do we need to do to get 30%, housing developed at the 30% level? What type of subsidies will it take? What is necessary so we can make this happen?
I could do it off the top of my head, but I'll wait till next week when we're doing all the direct assistance.
Great. Thank you. I know you could. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I have one other question. On the relocation assistance program through the state, is that something that will be covered when you, will you be discussing the different aspects of that, and the eligibility for that, and?
Correct. That's part of next week's discussion. We've been, and I had sent out some information today, but we've been checking into the fund and the solvency of it. And then the standards, the amounts available have not changed. There's been some legislation that looked at allowing that money to be used for things like first and last month's rent. Right now, it's really restricted on what you can use it for, but yes, that will be part of the discussion.
Okay, good. And can you also tell me, is that still at 80%? Am I on that, of the median income? Is that, do you know, is that still correct?
That information came from the state. Now, it came several months ago, and I'm not aware of a change.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
So the commission's response, or at least, I mean, the analysis of the Tombwater decision was pretty nuanced, and intricate, and a definite idea about some potential concerns of overlay zoning or an overlay. What would be your response, in a general sense, to Mr. Mullard's raising his concern about spot zoning?
First of all, I got to say, the comments I made about the Laurel Park decision didn't get much discussion among the commission. So I can't say that that's the commission's position, because we just saw those emails the last few days.
That's right, you did say that.
Right, right. So I, you know, I invite my colleagues on the commission if they want to disagree, or whatever on that. Spot zoning was, I think, addressed not so much by the commission, but I do believe I saw reference to it between the correspondence, between staff and the city attorney. So I'll defer to Ms. Anderson on that.
Right. The city attorney did ask that question. It came up, actually, at the retreat. You had asked that question. And the conclusion was that spots, this was not an issue, a spot zoning issue. So I can provide more information in Attachment 7. I think there's a specific paragraph about that topic, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the time, the effort you put into this. And those of you in the audience, please come back, join us for the other meetings, be informed. You really need to understand what's going on, and thank you. Thank you all for your comments tonight and your attendance. All right, let's take five minutes before we go into our regular council meeting. Kenmore City Council is back in session. And we are going to return to our regular meeting. And since we're doing things out of order, if you could please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. And this is those citizen comments that are not dealing with the Mobile Home Park, because we're finished with that issue for tonight. And we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Mike D.
Howdy. Mike D. here. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. It didn't say that I couldn't talk about all the Mobile Home Park stuff on there, so I didn't sign up to actually speak on the Mobile Home thing. But thank you for the opportunity to comment. I just, I did want to say that I did see on pages 11 and 14 that it did talk about the number of units and people of the 326 pages that were available in the packet for the citizens. It's a lot of stuff. And it's not available here for the citizens that show up. I know maybe you're paperless here, so you don't have copies of it available for the citizens to look at. Just something I thought I'd point out. I wanted to thank you for revisiting your plastic bag reduction ordinance. Just last month, on the 11th, you had a quick presentation on it. Looks like you're here to do that again. And you even quickly got a public hearing scheduled in here, and you might even take action next month, or later this month, July 23rd. And I'm glad to see that you're talking about temporary shelters and land use. And I'll hold off talking about everything else, but thanks. Mike D. from Lake Forest Park. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. D.
And I'm not representing Lake Forest Park.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Lynn Longpre.
First off, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Lynn Longpre. I live at 6643 Northeast 202nd Street. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed rezone and development of the property on Northeast 202nd Street for a public works facility. Last week, I submitted to each of you a package in support of my opposition, which addresses safety issues. We have lived on Northeast 202nd Street for five years, and have been concerned for the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists using the roadway, especially students walking to and from school. So we voted for the bond issue that helped fund the sidewalks and bike paths installed just last year. I would bring to your attention the fact that motorists speed on Northeast 202nd, and that the road curves at the proposed site, which further contributes to the risks. A public works facility deploying larger vehicles and equipment would further add to the risks. I also oppose the plan because it would change the residential character of the area to its detriment. Our enjoyment of our homes would be affected by the noise and activity inherent with a facility such as this one. Our property values would be negatively impacted. I ask that the council abandon its plans to purchase and develop the property for a public works facility. And I wanted to let you know that we have a petition circulating that I'll submit later this week, signed by residents of the area. that I'll submit later this week, signed by residents of the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longpre.
Estee Longpre?
Yes. I'm in a pair. Well, good evening, and my name is Estee Longpre, and I'm also a resident in Kenmore. I'd also like to recognize you, our elected council, for your commitment to our community and the time that you put into this effort. Secondly, I want to go on record as saying that I also oppose the city's proposal to rezone and construct the public works facility at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street. In my email to you on July 4th, I referenced several goals and policies in the land use element of the city's comprehensive plan that contradict the city's proposal for that property, primarily the preservation and appropriate use of R1 zoning for residential use. The city's proposal to convert the property into a public works facility is incongruent with the goals and policy in the plan. As one of your constituents, I strongly urge you to reconsider your proposed usage plan for the property and opt instead to preserve the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longpre.
Brian Holly.
Okay. Nope. That should work. Sure.
And that can be lowered.
Yep, it does. My knees. Mic drop. Okay, also a five-year resident. My wife works from home. She has a home office.
Could you please state your name?
Oh, sorry. Brian Holly, resident next door to the Huck property. My wife works from home. She works for the Census Bureau. Her office is on that side of the building, so any noise would be, I don't know, distracting to her, whatever's going on there now already is. But I really would like to see that property used as a swap for some of the other property that you own down near 80th already. I know that there's a lot of stuff, hoops to jump through for training park space out for additional park space, but seeing facilities there in a residential area would be incongruous, like she said. So, on that note, thank you for what you do, because I don't want to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Todd Prince.
Todd Prince, Kenmore resident. Thank you for your time tonight and the work that you do. I do appreciate that. I did want to touch base, I appreciate the work that you're doing on the temporary shelters and homelessness and that the city is being more active in what can be done to help those who are actively trying to improve their situation. You had a much-spirited discussion a few weeks earlier, and I appreciate the time and effort that you put into that. I did have a few concerns over the way the ordinance is. First is the duration of 125 days. It seems that a duration that was, that the duration was based more on what benefits the camps rather than the neighbors and the community, and that affects those neighborhoods so dramatically. So I would ask that you reconsider this and go down to 90 days, which is more consistent with the other cities. Four months seems a bit excessive to a neighborhood. Additionally, I would ask that you limit it to once per 365 days, not to be able to return six months later. The way it is right now, that shelter, a shelter could be in there for six months, which seems that it's moving more from temporary to semi-permanent. In Section C, Number 14, it references cold-weather shelters, and so, and I'm just confused on that part of the ordinance, that, does that mean that this is also being included there? Didn't sound like it, but the reference is in there. In parking, it has two spots per 25 residents, and we've been fortunate right now that where the shelters are, parking's never been an issue. But it does seem that it could significantly impact a neighborhood, that if you have 50 residents and let's say half have it a car, that's potentially 21 cars that could be put into the streets for street parking, and that could literally shut down the available street parking in a neighborhood. The other part was in Section D, Number 1, that the space, the number of people who are notified, I appreciate that it was increased to 1,000 feet. I think that's more able to reach those residents. I'm just wondering if it would be possible to have the mailing such that it clearly identifies what the purpose is when you notify those residents, as I've noted last time. When I've received these notifications, it's addressed to a resident, and it just appears to be junk mail, so I don't know that sending it out to those people, it's really going to understand what it is unless it's clearly identified on the outside of the communication. And also, if there are children who walk to school or on a bus line within that 1,000 feet, if it's possible to notify those families. I think, it sounds like it might already do that, but just to ensure that those people are made aware. So, thank you again for your time, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Nancy Bowen Pope.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Bowen Pope. I'm a 39-year resident of Kenmore now, and this is one of the first city hall meetings I've been to, but I want to thank you very much for everything you do. And now that I'm retired, I plan to make myself more of a regular here. I came, I came early, and I was really interested in this mobile home park discussion that I admit I wasn't aware of before. And what I'm about to say is not very important, I don't think, compared to that, but I came here tonight because on my Facebook feed a couple of nights ago, I, I came across an article that I thought was very interesting that was called "More Recycling Won't Solve Plastic Pollution." And this was an article from the Scientific American blog. It was dated July 6th of this year by an author by the name of Matt Wilkins, who's an ecologist and evolutionary biologist. And he's really asking, is plastic the best use for a single-use carryout from a market? Most people are not reusing these over and over and over again. In fact, they're actually made often with a small hole in the bottom that you really can't use them for many other things. And the thought that you can always recycle them is, is really not, it's not, it's not an end-use that really makes us, makes any sense, because it's always downgraded as they get recycled. And finally, all you can do is make carpet fiber out of them, or something like that. And so, this seems like a no-brainer. I have been carrying my own grocery bags, thank you, for, for all this time that I've lived here, and it really is not a big imposition on people. And people who say that it's a tax, it really is, we're paying the tax already in the degradation to our environment. We pay for it with all the stuff that washes up on Log Boom Park every winter storm we have, the cups, the, the bags, all that sort of thing. We, as either concerned citizens, go out and pick it up, or we're paying somebody else to pick it up. They clog the storm drains. I really, I really want to encourage you to place this ban on single-use plastic bags. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
Mayor, nobody else has signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Pastor Anya. If you'll please sign up at the end.
I apologize for not signing up. I will be sure to do that. I am Pastor Anya Helman. I'm a resident in Kenmore, and I'm the pastor at Northlake Lutheran Church, very close to here. I just had a couple of things. First, I wanted to say thank you for all of the work that you're doing in your efforts to try and find a solution with the mobile home parks, specifically. I've just been very impressed. I've been kind of watching behind the scenes, and although I haven't been able to attend all the meetings, I've been watching the feeds, and, and I've been very impressed with the amount of effort that's been going into trying to find a resolution, so I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to mention, Northlake, some of the conversation I heard was around how we need affordable housing, we need higher density, but we don't have a lot of places to build affordable housing. Northlake Lutheran Church is interested in selling a good piece of our land, about an acre, to Compass Housing Alliance in order to build affordable housing. Compass Alliance wants to put in a 60-unit place on our property, so 60 units at, I think it could be down to 30 percent that we were talking about. And so, in order to do that, though, a zoning change would need to happen, and that means it's going to come back to the city council. So I wanted to mention it now, just to keep it in your mind, so that when it comes, that you're, you're remembering those needs as we discuss that. And then, thirdly, I just thought I would mention, since it came up, Camp Unity, the reason for the four-month versus three-month timeframe, the camp used to do three months, and what they found was the expense and the burden of having to move four times a year is pretty huge. These are people moving all of their belongings, and I've been part of the move. It's a huge undertaking. By switching it to four months allows them to only have to move three times a year, which makes a huge difference for them. And I've noticed some of the, I believe, some of our neighboring towns have been changing their guidelines from three months to four months as well. So I just thought I would give you that information as you have your conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. Remember to sign up, Pastor Helman. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes? And you need to sign up after also.
Okay, I will. My name's Lynette Bergman, and we live alongside the property of the, the current Huck property with the proposed public works, and we'd just love to be on record to say that we definitely oppose the public works, and we'd love to see it stay residential, especially with Swamp Creek nearby. There's something very similar in terms of a public park and in terms of policing that area at night or after dark, that type of a situation, that our vote would, would be a residential situation in line with, with what it currently is. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman. Thank you for your comments. Mr. D., thank you. Those of you who spoke on the Huck property, we will be, it's on our agenda for next week, so please come back. Thank you, Pastor, for your comments on the rezone and that. And, Mr. Prince, your comments on the mailing and the, the shelter, appreciated, and I'm sure somebody will be in touch with you on the mailing side of it, so thank you very much. All right, with that, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda's passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I was not here for the beginning of this. I have lots of questions and a number of comments, so I'm turning this portion over to the deputy mayor.
All right, we've got Jack Erhart doing this presentation. Why don't we have the staff, why don't we have staff do the presentation quickly, and then we'll take questions, and then we'll do the public hearing.
Great. These presentations will be brief. The first one, on the plastic bag policy, this is just going to be an overview of what we've proposed as an ordinance based on feedback from the council and from the discussions that we've had. So I will just briefly go over the ordinance as written and proposed at this time. So banned from the ordinance will be plastic bags from retail establishments citywide. And what that means is that retail establishments will not be able to provide plastic bags like you see typically at the cash register or the point of sale. The proposed ordinance would also require that a fee of no less than five cents per paper bag provided be required by the retail establishment. This is money that will be retained by the retail establishment. A big part of its purpose is for the retail establishment to recoup the cost of paper bags, and also as a nudge to customers to use reusable bags. Exempted from the proposed ordinance are bags used inside stores, so plastic bags that you usually see to package bulk items, meat or fish, flowers or plants, prepared foods or bakery goods, or prescription drugs will be exempted, as well as restaurant takeout bags, newspaper bags, door hanger bags, tire bags, laundry bags, packages of garbage, and waste bags. I've had some questions about types of establishments that are exempted. It's easier to think about which types of bags are exempted, and then that kind of helps you to understand which establishments those would fit with. Other exemptions, as proposed, are that food banks would be exempted from the plastic bag ban, and then no five-cent paper fee would be assessed to food assistance program recipients, programs like WIC, TANF, SNAP, and FAP. Those are all federal or state food programs. The compliance date, as proposed, is January 1st of 2019. That's all I have for that.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Curtis.
I thought we had a discussion on the people on food assistance programs, whether they should be part of this program as well. If we're doing this for the sake of the environment, you know, for them to pay five cents to remind them next time to bring a, a real bag, don't, we either, we must not have come to a conclusion. I know we discussed it.
That's correct. We didn't come to a conclusion, and I do remember, I believe, Councilmember Smith brought that point up. What I would say is that it's something that in other cities, those types of customers have been exempted across the board, in Washington and other cities that have this type of ordinance. It's something that you can continue to discuss and direct us on. We're open to that, of course.
Mayor Baker.
Yeah, on, on that issue, other than having the person identify themselves as being needy, I don't see any other way to enforce that, and I think that is really, really shameful to make somebody say that they're in need and can't afford that five cents. So I am totally against that.
Just to answer that, so a way that that has been assessed in other cities is by providing a voucher from one of those programs. They're not assessed that fee. There's nothing that's communicated beyond that.
Councilmember Marshall.
And what sort of outreach have we done thus far to local businesses, and what response do we have?
Good question. So we have sent out letters to the businesses that I believed would be affected in the city. We sent out a letter, we sent out an email as well to residents, and I think about 40 businesses received letters. We have received feedback from some of them. I think the pertinent feedback I've included, I sent to you in a packet today.
Do we have any other? Okay. Mayor Baker.
Yeah, my understanding is Kirkland provides recyclable bags, recycled bags at no charge. Why have we decided not to allow recycled bags to be used at no charge?
And are you speaking of recycled paper bags?
Yes.
That's something that I can look into. My understanding is that the, in other cities, the paper bags that can be distributed for five cents have to be recycled bags, and the five-cent fee still applies. So I believe that's the case. So I believe that's the case in Kirkland, but I can research that.
Yeah, please do, because in here it says Kirkland allows, gives, the recycled, or the bags are free, recycled paper bags are free.
Councilmember Shrubnik, did you have a question?
I did, and I first just want to say you did a great job of capturing all the discussion. I thought it was terrific. And we've received a lot of feedback, some of which you forwarded and others we got directly, and even a couple of people making their potential votes for us as council members contingent on this single issue, which I thought was interesting. Frankly, I'm not a single-issue person, but on balance, the feedback has been really positive. And so I, you know, continue to support this, and I appreciate your work. It's a part of reduce, reuse, recycle, and I hope we can kind of pair it more with education and outreach, which it sounds like you're already doing, which is, was one of my questions. My other one is, and I tried to look back at my notes, and I couldn't find the specifics. I thought we had a little bit longer runtime or compliance time that we had talked about, but I just couldn't find my specifics, so.
Yeah, that's something that we discussed, and on average, the other cities that have passed something similar are around 10 months, and we talked about that amount of time, but there was nothing that was decided the last time we discussed this. So that's something that still could be directed in another direction.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I would like to bring up on that exemption again, which is the, it's A of 8.50.030. I would recommend we just eliminate that, because I just think if we're going to ask our residents to abide by this ordinance, it shouldn't, it should be irrelevant what their economic status is. That shouldn't matter, so I would say I would eliminate that exemption.
Councilmember Marshall?
So the fee collected, it does not go to the city, it's retained by the merchant. The merchant still needs to keep track of it and audit it or have records available?
They don't, they don't. In some cities, that's a requirement, in others, it's not, and as proposed, we don't require that they keep track of that, just that they make sure that it's assessed.
It must be assessed, okay. And what is, what would be the rationale then, as opposed to allowing the merchant then to make that choice themselves as to whether to retain the fee or see how much that's going to offset them and do what they would do as opposed to our ordinance?
That's a good question. I think a couple of things come to mind, and one is competition among stores, trying to get customers by applying or not applying the five-cent fee. And that could take away from what we mentioned as a nudge to use reusable bags. So if I know that a store is not going to assess the fee, I'll be more likely to use their paper bags and not be nudged toward reusable bags. I think that's the reason why, in general, in the past, it's been applied to all retailers to require that.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Baker?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things we've been hearing in email. Why do we need to shop in Kenmore? Why don't we just go to Bothell, and the bags are free, and we don't have to worry about it? I mean, I understand the need or the desire here to ban the plastic, but I just do not understand the five cents. They give away paper bags all the time in the stores, and I don't know why we have to change that. Kirkland gives away small paper bags for free. I don't see any provision in here for us to do that. And I'm looking at the list, and by the way, the Kirkland in the band, the bags is on your summary alternatives, and it's example number two, or example number three. Is it three, two? Anyway, it's the one that, no, it's number one, where Kirkland can give away, give away the bags for free. The stores can give away paper bags for free and not charge the five cents. The other thing that's not clear is you've got a list of establishments here, and it seems to be every store in Kenmore that would come under this agreement, under this, where most cities have a limit on the amount of income they generate before they come under this. So a small mom and pop restaurant, according to what I'm seeing here, is affected, but most cities don't have the small businesses affected that way. And yet, another thing that's not clear to me is on your regulations, 8.50.020, F, says no retail establishment in the city shall provide a polyethylene or non-compostable plastic film bags tinted green and brown for customers in the stores as carryout or home delivery. Does that mean white bags and clear bags are okay?
Yeah, that's talking about what's provided in the store for bulk items, for produce, for those kinds of items.
So they can have, checkout stand have a bag, as long as it's not brown or green? Because I'm seeing no bags that are brown or green, that doesn't say anything about the other colors.
That's incorrect.
Am I just totally misunderstanding this?
Yeah, so, so to try to clear that up, so no bags can be provided at the point of sale at the cash register at all. And then this is saying that no bags can be provided in those other exempted areas, such as bulk items, meat and fish, foods from the bakery, takeout-type foods. It's saying that the stores should not provide a bag that is tinted brown or green there, and the reason for that is because stores have, Seattle saw some problems with stores providing green or brown bags in those areas that were non-compostable bags, but traditionally compostable bags are brown or green. So there's been some confusion in the past, this bag is brown or green, I can compost it, and it's sorted that way, and then it can't be composted, and there's confusion at the centers for composting. And so the only reason this provision is in here is it's to restrict stores from providing confusing, non-compostable bags in their produce areas, their bulk food item areas.
But what if they choose to provide compostable bags in those areas?
They can do that.
But they're green and brown.
Yeah, so what this says is, if you read on G, so, give me just a second. Yeah, so as this says, they can't be polyethylene or other non-compostable plastic bags that are tinted green or brown. So the compostable bags that they will provide that are green or brown won't be polyethylene or non-compostable.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got for now.
Councilmember Curtis?
So going back to the, removing the exemption, A, Brent, did you make a motion or just think it was a good idea?
I, I thought it was a good idea when we had the discussion last time, that's why I brought it, because I just, I just don't understand why it needs to be exempt. And so I didn't, the way, since no, I should have, I guess I could wait until somebody proposes a motion to approve this, and I could amend it at that time if you would prefer.
I can make a comment and then a motion.
Okay.
My comment is, I save, you know, bags from Outback and REI, and all those things can be used a gazillion times. And then the city gives out free bags that can be used a really long time. So everybody should be able to get the nice reusable bags, like, for free. It shouldn't cost anything to get those. So I think we should just remove this section. So I'd like to make a motion that we just remove 8.50.030 exemptions, A.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a discussion? Councilmember Curtis, you want to speak to your motion?
I think I've made myself clear enough.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Marshall?
Oh, and I understood we were going to be voting on this at a later date. Would this be a motion that recommends to staff to further refine with that edit? Is that right?
Yeah, we don't have the ordinance in front of us right now, so this is a motion for staff to take that out in the final ordinance. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, clerk will take the roll.
Point of information, let's restate that, strike which section?
8.50.030 exemptions, section A.
If you want to take a look at B, I think that's pretty similar to A, if you'd also like to include that in your motion.
I would not want to add that to my motion. It feels different enough to me.
And they can use plastic bags, so I'd like to have that exempt.
So to be clear, which section are we looking at exactly?
Page six of the agenda bill. And it's A.
So the motion is remove 8.50.030, point A. Are we all clear on what we're voting on?
Yep.
Okay. Can the clerk take the roll?
Okay, hold on real quick. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
No.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No. Motion fails?
Aye, yep, fails.
Okay. City manager?
Mayor Baker earlier brought up the mom and pop issue and whether or not they should be included. I believe when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, we did get your direction on that, if I'm not mistaken, and I think what we heard from the consensus of you was you wanted to just include all stores. Is that, is that what we heard from you?
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Shrubnik?
And a further clarification, that restaurant carryout is exempted as a function, it's the function of the bag, so it's, because you brought that up as well, so, yeah.
All right. Do we have any other discussion? Do we want to open up the public hearing?
Can I just get a clarification, City Manager? On the, on this draft ordinance that's here, there's a whereas, the city finds that composting is threatened because, it's like we made a decision, I'm wondering, when did we make that decision? Or is that, we are going to make that decision because this is the ordinance?
You can make that decision. This is something that was included as part of the recommended ordinance from Zero Waste Washington, so you're correct, it's not something that's been decided by the city.
It's something that we will decide.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome to strike out any whereas that you don't want.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I do have a question back to the mom and pop, say, like, teriyaki. So I don't usually take a reusable bag when I go to get my teriyaki, and they always use those plastic bags and wrap them all up. So now they're going to have to switch over to paper.
That's incorrect. So as Councilmember Shrubnik mentioned, it's a function of the bag, so restaurant takeout bags are exempted, and it goes specific into the reason, but it talks about potential for contamination and protection of liquids.
Got it, okay.
So, yeah, all restaurants, for providing restaurant takeout food would be exempted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then I'm going to declare the public hearing open for ordinance number 18-0465, plastic bag policy. Do we have anybody signed up?
Mike D.
Howdy, Mike D. from Lake Forest Park here, thank you for the opportunity to comment again. The public hearing signup sheets weren't there earlier, so I didn't know that, wasn't sure how you were going to do that, because I haven't seen how you do that here. I'm here to speak about the plastic bag policy, and I was having trouble getting my hyperlink to work on my phone, but I managed to find it on page 275 to 292 of 326 pages in your packet there, is the section on that. There was some talk about the five cents, and, you know, maybe it's not a big deal. If you're on one of these programs, WIC, Women, Infant, and Children, or SNAP's Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needing Families, some of those programs, you get cash, some of them you don't, depending on how many groceries you're getting, you may need multiple bags, and so that becomes more than five cents, it starts adding up. And if you don't have cash on you, then you're sitting there trying to figure out what you're going to do. So that's, that's an opportunity there. We did hear at the last, on June 11th, some of the, even though you have different options of recycled bags, reusable bags, and this and that, that there's still a certain environmental impact. And even, even for it to be considered reusable, they had to be able to carry 22 pounds for, you know, a certain distance, we didn't hear the distance at that time, but, and fun stuff like that. And so I think, I think that's about all for me for now, thank you for looking at it, from Lake Forest Park, and I'm not representing Lake Forest Park, but thanks.
Do we have anybody else signed up?
Nobody else signed up.
Does anybody else wish, does anybody else wish to be heard? Anybody else wish to be heard? Anybody else wish to be heard?
I would like to say something.
Yes?
Nancy, go on, quote again. I would like to say that the paper bags have their cost as well. I think that we really need to be looking at our cost to the environment, and I think that we really need to be working towards getting people to bring their own bags that can be used multiple times. And so I think we need to keep that in mind, that, yes, we don't want to have these single-use plastic bags, but we don't necessarily want single-use paper bags as well. Yes, they can be composted and all, but, you know, we'll go back to the whole thing of these come from trees and means cutting down the trees and everything. So I think we need to keep in mind, as this goes forward, that we want to train people, which isn't really too hard, actually, to just bring bags to the store and reuse them over and over and over again. So that's my comment.
Anybody else wish to be heard? All right, then I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Do we have any further discussion or questions? Mayor Baker?
So what kind of education program we're going to have for the small businesses around here? How are the hodgepodge, the toshies, the other restaurants around going to realize that they can use plastic bags? Are we going to go around individually, or are we going to just send a mass mailing? I mean, how are we going to do this?
That's something that we're still going to determine, our communication plan for, for the retailers, but we'll definitely keep the small ones in mind and think strategically about how we can best communicate that message. But thanks for that concern, and again, we'll, we'll do what we can, especially for those small retailers.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the exemption, looking at the number or the types of businesses that are involved, in my reading through it and trying to understand what we're trying to do, it's a little confusing, so I, I hope we can make it clearer for the, for the small business owner.
Yeah, and perhaps you remember, we had the Kirkland visual guides that they gave out with theirs, and I thought those were really simple and really helpful, and I imagine we'll be able to create something really similar to that, to give to all of the retailers in Kenmore, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 18-0466, temporary shelter land use. Jack, you're at it again.
All right, again, hope to be brief on this, and... And I hope that as we propose this ordinance, that it will reflect the discussions that we had about this. Remember that what we've proposed here will apply to regular temporary shelters, homeless shelters. We decided at the time that we would address low-barrier shelters at a different date, and so we won't be talking about that with this public hearing. So I want to go over again, like we did last time, just the requirements with the changes that you all directed. So for the application for a temporary shelter, temporary homeless shelter, we're proposing that a site plan, self-management plan, a transportation plan, and a code of conduct be required with the application. Any questions on this slide or this requirement? Okay, this next slide is about maximum occupancy, duration, frequency, and concurrence. You all directed that the maximum occupancy should be fifty for temporary homeless shelters, and that the total site area be equal to at least one hundred and fifty square feet per resident. We've also included in there, if they're indoor, then they must be up to the building code for safety. The duration, you all directed one hundred and twenty-five days maximum, and that a report would be required around the sixty-day mark. That's a report that would be submitted to the city manager and then presented here in front of the council just about how things are going, challenges, how they've addressed challenges. Frequency, we propose one hundred and eighty days after a site leaves. One hundred and eighty days must transpire before that site is used again. And we talked last time as well about only one shelter being in operation at a time citywide. Any questions on these requirements?
Councilmember Curtis?
So it seems like we did have the discussion, but I can't remember if we came to the conclusion of only having one per year. Did we come to a conclusion on that or just discuss it? I just can't quite remember.
I'm not sure either. I don't remember that that was something that was agreed to, we were directed to change from the one hundred and eighty days, but if you would like to discuss it tonight, that's something you can discuss.
Yeah, I don't recall that either.
Okay.
I mean, I recall that we had said one year.
Yeah, we discussed it, but, I mean, so we're okay with it being in the city two times in a year? Three, four months and then another four months?
I recall once a year, but anyway.
Well, that's the question.
Yeah, and that's what I recall us discussing.
Here it says, one hundred and eighty days is all it needs to be gone before it can come back again.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Shrevnik?
So I would point out that if they're here for one hundred and twenty-five days, and then there's one hundred and eighty days after the end, then that's a hundred and, three hundred and five days between start dates. So it's not really twice a year. If we wanted to adjust this, I might say, I might toss out that instead of saying that there has to be one hundred and eighty days must transpire before the site is used again, I would say something like three hundred and fifty-five days must transpire from the start date to the next start date, or something along those lines.
Goes back to the one to a year.
Yeah.
Either way, it's all.
Yeah, and along with giving it some flexibility to move a couple of days, start date depending on whatever, outside factors. But this would only allow once every three hundred and five days, which is not, it's not every six months as it was painted earlier.
That's it. Councilmember Shrevnik?
Terry, I had exactly the same comment.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I have a question on, of the new ordinance on number two G. And it just has to do with the way it's worded, and I know what you mean, and I know everybody in this room knows what you mean, but I'm wondering if it's ambiguous from just a legal perspective. And it has to do with where it says on G, and it says, "and which shall at a minimum prohibit or require, as applicable, the following." And then it has drugs or alcohol, weapons, but it doesn't, that should be prohibit, not prohibit or require, because it really doesn't say which is a prohibition and which is a requirement. Does that make sense to what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, yeah.
I would really hate to prohibit quiet hours.
Yeah, that's the problem. It's quiet hours doesn't fit.
What's that? Did I miss something obvious on there?
The last one.
No, and I see the quiet hours, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't outline which things are prohibited and which are required. It lumps them all together.
That's easy. We can make that change.
Okay, that's, I know it's, it sounds.
No, it's a good point.
Okay.
Thanks. Other questions pertaining to the things on this slide? Okay. On the next, about safety and security. So permitted locations, we say not in conflict with health and safety of the community. That's something that will be decided in the application process. We propose that checks for sex offenders and persons with active warrants be required, and that the police be notified immediately if sex offender or a person with an active warrant is identified. And then for children, we require that persons under eighteen are prohibited from staying overnight unless accompanied by a parent or guardian. Are there any questions on these requirements? Okay. To continue with safety and security, so that code of conduct that we just talked about, it must be submitted with the application and include at a minimum. No drugs or alcohol, no weapons, no violence, no open flames, no loitering in neighborhood, and quiet hours. It's more clear here. And then security, that the shelter provides the contact information for an emergency point of contact who can be contacted at any time. Any questions here? Okay, and this is the last slide, neighbor impacts. Smoking restricted to a designated area, a minimum of twenty-five feet from adjacent properties. Quiet hours in accordance with the city code. A side obscuring fence will be required, a six-foot fence unless the shelter is out of view already of adjacent properties. And then neighbor notice, we discussed having thirty days required before the application submittal that neighbors within one thousand feet are notified by the sponsoring organization, and that fourteen days before the manager's decision, a notice of an informational meeting be sent to neighbors, also by the sponsoring organization. And then the city, fourteen days before the decision, will update the website and provide information on the proposed shelter for citizens. Any questions here?
Councilmember Shrevnik, then Councilmember Curtis?
So one little picky point on two, the notification radius is five hundred feet as opposed to a thousand. Was that intentionally different?
I'm not sure that it was, and that's something we can also change to a thousand feet. I don't think that's something we discussed last time.
I mean, I would think you'd want it just consist, I mean, just have the radius be consistent. I don't know. That would be my preference, but.
And would that, would that be the consensus of the council?
Yeah, I mean, a thousand feet is what I thought.
Either that or one's a diameter and one's a radius.
Oh, you're probably right, yes, there you go.
And my feeling is probably that we meant to change both and change one of them to one thousand feet. So thanks for noticing that.
That one, and then the other question, oh, had to do with the report, and is that in this section or another?
Yeah, that was in a previous section, but let's talk about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I missed it. I was thinking this was the reporting section. It'd be great to specify a little bit more about what we mean by a report. Just things like, you know, number served, number housed through the program if they have that stat. You know, number of police or fire contacts, and maybe we get that another way, I don't know. But these are just some ideas, any, you know, and adverse, any adverse events or conflicts or complaints. You know, just some basics. I mean, I don't know, those were just the things off the top of my head, and maybe we don't need to specify, but it just, I would hate to have an encampment go to inordinate lengths to do a, you know, a lengthy report if really what we just want is something, you know, brief. So that was my thought.
That's, I appreciate that thought. That's something that we can look at. It's also possible, I'm wondering if upon the issuance of the application, some guidelines for that report can be given, because that's something that will be submitted to the city manager and then summarized here in council meeting. But we can add some consistency to what's reported. Any other questions?
So we didn't discuss it last time, but the smoking twenty-five feet minimum. I and others have allergies to smoke, and boy, twenty-five feet is like a car length and a spec. It's really a, I wouldn't be able to tolerate that. But I know they've been really cooperative and they moved it because of neighbor concerns. So I don't know if we want to do anything in our ordinance or just depend on their goodwill to move it.
Yeah, and we did talk about that last time, and our feeling was this is the, this is the minimum, and then hopefully be able to resolve with neighbors. We can add language if needed, if desired, to be more specific on what would happen if neighbors don't like the twenty-five feet.
Maybe something like accommodations will be made if neighbors have health issues or concerns or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Boy, do I owe you apology. All those years I smoked and you were my doctor. I didn't realize when I was putting you through.
Nobody could fool me. They would tell me they could smoke, and then, yeah, this morning.
But you know I quit now. Councilmember Marshall?
What responses in the public commentary from the neighbors and/or from the residents or from anybody from Camp Unity did we have regarding the six-foot fence? I'm just looking at this idea now. I know, and coming into it somewhat late, but the idea disturbs me.
Haven't really gotten any feedback about that. That's something that Camp Unity is used to. It's something that they already have in place because they're used to cities requiring that. That's a pretty consistent standard. So that's, as far as hearing any objection to that from the camps, we haven't heard any.
And conversely, input from the neighbors?
Haven't heard anything.
Something was brought up during comments. Is there a way on the notifications actually use people's names rather than to whom it concerns?
Would you repeat that?
On the mailings, on the addressing on the mailings?
To include, to include what?
Their name, on the address when we send it out. I mean, is that something we have ready access to, or is that something that would be a lot of problems?
We'll have to get back to you on that.
That's fine. I mean, it just seems like, when you see resident or something, it's more likely to go on the trash. I thought that was a pretty good point, that if it was addressed. But on the other side of the coin is I don't want you going through tons of work. The object is to get the notification out, not to make more work.
Thanks.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
This raised a little question for me. Is it, is it the city that's putting out the notice or the, that's what I thought.
It's the sponsoring organization.
But I know there's mailings that we do that we get just in general that say to resident or whatever, and it'd be just nice to have the names.
Any other questions? Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions in general?
I have a question for the council.
Yes, please.
Earlier this evening, one of our citizens commented upon the apparent, I guess, unclarity as to whether all or portions of this ordinance apply the same way to indoor temporary shelters as well as outdoor temporary shelters. And I was, as I was reviewing this ordinance in the last hour, my question to the council is, do you think it's clear enough in all respects that this is distinguishing between indoor and outdoor where necessary? Because we certainly will double-check that, because, for example, I'm looking at one section in here, C two, that says the total site area has to be at least one hundred and fifty square feet per resident. And I'm wondering whether that is meant to apply to indoor shelters as well. So with your permission, we'll double-check that all of this accurately applies both to indoor and outdoor shelter areas.
Deputy Mayor?
I mean, I would be concerned that when we're talking about, you know, when we have the winter, when we get back to the discussion about the winter shelter or overnight shelters where people are sleeping and then leaving in the morning, I would be concerned that a hundred and fifty foot per person minimum, if it applied to that, might preclude us from letting enough people sleep in a basement overnight.
That's why I asked that question.
So I think it's a different, yeah, so I think these are different. These should be different.
I want to make sure that when we say we're doing low barrier later, there can be indoor shelters that are not low barrier.
That's right.
Wanted us to clarify that for ourselves, too.
That's right, and the point is taken. I think that the one hundred and fifty square foot, we did have in mind that that would be for outdoor shelters, and we should say specifically here for outdoor shelters, because.
We'll work on the details of that discussion.
All right. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear on something, and I think you are, but so at the last discussion, you weren't able to come to a consensus on the low barrier policies. So you directed us just to come forward with a temporary shelter policy, which we have. I do want to point out, if this is all you adopt, and we, and we don't have, and we don't arrive at consensus on low barrier, then low barrier won't be allowed. Other than what you've already adopted for this October. What you've already approved.
Low, I, sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought low barrier would have to go through the same process that they just did, which is the temporary use permit, because we don't have anything specific.
Well, my understanding is you're now, you're now, you now have a policy about temporary shelters. And so this addresses all temporary shelters.
And does it explicitly, I mean, I think this is part of your point, actually, does it explicitly exclude low barrier? Oh, it does because of the.
Sex offender.
Right, 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 I see.
So just, I just want you to know, if you go forward and adopt this policy, and then we do fail to come back and have consensus on a low barrier one, then low barriers won't be allowed anymore, with the exception of the one that's already been approved for this October.
But the plan all along has been for us to, once we had all seven of us together again, to have that discussion. And I assume that's still the plan for staff to come back to us probably in September or something and finish that up. Is that correct?
I can't do it without Jack. I need Jack.
And I am, I am planning to prepare a memo about low barrier shelters that provide more evidence and some research on where those have done to help you with that discussion.
So are we going to be able to wrap this up before Jack gets back to school?
I doubt it. I don't know. What do you think, Jack?
It's okay if we don't. I'm fine either way.
I'm not okay.
Your city is more important than me.
Maybe we can have you call in in September or something.
Yes, but you see, you have become an important part of the city. All right. So I guess the, is everybody in agreement where our directing council to, I mean, we're directing staff to prepare an ordinance for our consideration on the twenty-third? There you go.
Mayor, we've got a public hearing, so.
Yes.
Okay, just a reminder.
Thank you for that. So I'll declare the public hearing open. For adoption, well, for, yeah, let me get this under the agenda so I word it the right way. So we are going to declare a public hearing open for ordinance number eighteen dash zero four six six, temporary shelters and land use. Anybody wishing to speak?
Mike D.
And he's not speaking for Lake Forest Park.
That's right, thank you. Howdy, Mike D here. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Since the public hearing sheets went out there, I signed up. I'll say what in this book earlier about this, but yes, thank you for the opportunity. On pages two hundred and ninety-three of your three hundred and twenty-six pages, it talks about this. And I had, I was trying to participate in some of this stuff here in your city. When NUSA, the North Urban Human Services Alliance, had a homeless house committee, and I knew you were coming over here and you were going to talk about the shelter that the church was going to do over here. I wanted to go to that, but I missed that meeting, and then the group kind of stopped that committee. I don't know if they retired it or what, and they're working on. I don't know if they retired it or what, and they're working on other things now. But, so I was trying to pay attention. One of the, there was something that talked about homeless people or something like that, and I want to make sure that we're, we're talking about these are people experiencing homelessness, that they're people first, and it's a temporary condition. And, let's see. As far as links of time, maybe it's, it's, I didn't, in fairness to you all, and in fairness to those working on the shelters and those advocating and those with concerns, I haven't read all the documentation that you have on this. Wasn't even sure if I was going to make it tonight. But as far as extending the timeline, is there some type of incentive? If someone's doing good, maybe you consider extending their timeline. If they're more of a problem than the solution, then maybe you consider not extending the timeline. And then, I wrote down why, I forgot what that one's about. But, oh, the impact, there was talk about impact. I'm not sure about the impact. I do agree with attorney, how, or was it the city manager? Anyway, it wasn't necessarily clear from what I saw, at least from the title, whether these are indoor shelters or outdoor shelters. And then with the thing on the screen, I still wasn't sure. And smoking is, you know, are some of these potentially not smoking shelters? And then I don't know if that's a trouble for the people trying to enforce that, if people try to sneak cigarettes and all that fun stuff. Also, is there social services involved besides the church? If they are doing reporting, are you tracking these people? And it sounds like you're checking for warrants. What happens if they do have warrants? You send the police in and they come and get them? You know, or you send ICE in, you know, the Immigration and Customs Enforcement? Are you, if they, if they are sex offenders, is this stuff you want to know? Now that you know this stuff, what do you do with that information? If there's someone that is a sex offender, does that mean that you contact a potential probation officer or somebody from the DOC or someone that's doing them? And maybe make them find housing for them or work with them? I know that's a potential option. But at the same time, a lot of times those are people that are having trouble getting housing because people don't want them to live in their neighborhood or whatever. And there's rules about what you can and can't do about that, but it doesn't necessarily mean someone's going to rent to you. I don't have that issue, but I've heard about it when we had some training over in Lake Forest Park. So, oh, also incentives to house. If you're doing a report, that was a good question, you know, what do you do with this information? What kind of report do you want? Is there an incentive to house, to take people to the next step? We know that temporary shelters are one of the most expensive solutions. Housing first is the, is kind of the thinking there, but housing first with support. And that's easier said than done, but. Let's see, also, there's some costs to apply. Like you have a permit, and you have this, like, is it one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollar SEPA review that you have to do? I'm not even sure if that's necessary, but it's great. I mean, it's great that you want that, but at the same time, I'm not sure how necessary it is to charge that much for it. And then, more information about the low barrier, maybe that's in there when you're talking about that. And also, I know there are certain fire marshal requirements that people ask that get put on, and some of those may be necessary and some may not be, and some of those may be overly used. So just kind of keep an eye on that. That I know churches, if they're providing some of this, have certain religious exemptions for certain things, to use the property a certain way before it becomes a government taking. And so, just things to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Pastor Anya Helman.
Hello, again. So I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that came up in the discussion. One, I already had down on here, a request that the city would provide the organization with the names and addresses for sending. So to have the city, in other words, if it's North Lake Lutheran Church who wants to host, having the city send North Lake Lutheran Church a list of all of the addresses and names of people who live within the radius that's been designated so that we can make sure that we're hitting everyone we need to hit when we send those notifications. So that's one request. Also, I was hoping that, the question around the land use permit and whether that prohibited low barrier shelters came up for us as well. And I was wondering if there's a way to make it clear. What I was seeing this as is specifically outdoor shelter permit, and not to be addressing the indoor. And if that was made clear on this, then I don't believe passing this would prohibit a low barrier shelter, because then it would be, it would prohibit a low barrier outdoor shelter, but it wouldn't necessarily prohibit a low barrier indoor shelter if this was named such that it was outdoor shelters. But I know that that conversation will happen later. And, oh, one, you were talking a little bit about frequencies and how frequent the camp could be in one place. I, I think there was a little confusion for me, anyway, on whether we were talking about the site or the city. So in other words, whether you could have, I certainly, as the pastor of a church, would not want to host the camp more than once in a year, but I could imagine a scenario where a camp may want to be in one faith community and then move to another faith community within the same city. So just to try and clarify that in the documentation. This hasn't even been discussed yet, and it's not something I'm proposing right now, but I thought I would bring up. You might want to think about safe parking as well. I don't know if you're aware of safe parking programs. There are different cities that have where someone can come, people who live in their cars. It's a place for people who live in their cars to park safely. And there are actual programs where some places do background checks or don't do background checks, or whatever the case may be, and they open up their parking lot for that. There's been discussion, I've heard, in different faith communities around doing something like that. And it just thought it might be good to get ahead of the game and start thinking about what that would look like and whether that falls under something like this, or whether that would be a whole different type of permit. I don't know. Oh, and I wanted to point out, I don't know the specifics on this. I was trying to think about this. The way Camp Unity is set up right now at North Lake, that six-foot fence goes around all of the tents where they sleep. But there's a few community tents. If you've been there, you may have seen there's some community tents that are on the parking lot area. The six-foot tent fence does not go around that right now. Now, part of that's because most of it, there's wooded area on one side, but I do believe there are probably a couple of neighbors who can see those tents right now. So I, it hasn't been an issue, but I thought I'd point that out because that's one way that what we're doing is a little bit different than the way that it's currently described in the setting. I think that's it. And if you all have any questions for me at some point, I don't, I know that's not appropriate right now, but I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Pastor.
Nobody else signed up?
Anybody else wishing? Well, we have another taker. They're watching.
Good evening, Kristen Joyner, clergy at Bothell United Methodist. We have many congregants who live in Kenmore, and I live one backyard away from Kenmore, so I often feel like a Kenmore resident as well. Thank you for your work and for caring about the people who can't afford to live here. That's much appreciated. I did want to address just a little more clarity on that, on the discussion, on whether this... What I have heard said tonight is a little confusion. If this is a temporary land use permit application process, which is what it says, versus a temporary use for inside of a building, which I think is something different. It is different in regards to how faith communities can do their ministries, whether or not that's low barrier permitted or not. So that is something you, you might want to look into. Faith communities can do this without a permit. When you're talking about low barrier, I was instructed that the low barrier discussion would not happen until August. And so we're preparing some information about low barrier shelters for you and for Jack. If that discussion is not happening until August, but if what I heard you say approving this on July twenty-third precludes or prohibits low barrier shelters from happening in the city, that feels a little like a bait and switch or something, that you could prove an ordinance before a discussion actually happens. So I think that needs some clarification. And that's it. Thank you so much.
And a little clarification, there won't be any meetings in August because we're off for the month of August. So it would take place in September. Anybody else? No, one time. All right. I mean, if it's one sentence, Pastor. I'm breaking all of the conventions.
I appreciate it. It was just a suggestion, a quick suggestion. Since we're, we know that we are having the shelter in October, I would suggest if we can hold off on making decisions about the, until after the shelter is here, it would give you all an opportunity to come and visit the shelter and an opportunity for residents, people who live next, around it, to give any feedback after having just experienced the shelter here. So, just a suggestion.
Thank you, Pastor. Deputy Mayor.
So I, I, after thinking this over and hearing Pastor Anya talk, I actually am a little concerned about, I don't think we're doing the right thing if, if we're passing this, which then affects an issue that we've decided we're talking about at a later date. I would just propose that we, wherever it says temporary homeless shelter, we just change that to read temporary outdoor homeless shelter throughout this particular part. And then when we come back to talk about indoor shelters, we have a separate section or a sep, a separate subchapter that we put it into, kind of keeping it a separate section. Does staff of the city attorney think that might work for our purposes?
Could that be confusing because there could be shelters indoor that are not low barrier?
Yeah, that's, that's...
They'd both be included in the ordinance. Indoor shelters will be a separate discussion with a separate ordinance, and it'll include both, low barrier and full barrier.
I mean, really, I, I think this whole discussion has never been really so much about low barrier versus tents. It's more about outdoor, outdoor shelters used throughout the day. Because these are used, and people are essentially living there, coming and going throughout the day, versus night shelters where people sleep and then they, you know, they just come there, they eat a meal, they sleep, and then they leave. And that's kind of been the major, that's the major distinction between the two. And whether we allow the night, the ones at night to be low barrier or not is the discussion that we've put off, that we decided to put off in the way that everybody here. So I would, I would hate to kind of, essentially through the back door, take action on an issue that we've decided to table, if we could just clarify it with inserting a couple of words.
But are there not, or is there a possibility that a low barrier shelter could be outside? Or just not right now? In what's been applied for here?
Yeah, so I haven't really thought about that. But you're correct that our thought was, even though what we've experienced here is the outdoor encampments and the indoor low barrier shelters, we did try to write this ordinance in a way that would also reflect an indoor shelter that's not low barrier, regulations for those as well, the potential of that kind. But as you direct, we could change that to just be encampments for now.
Because there is a possibility the low barrier shelter could be outdoor, too.
Well, not if we pass this ordinance.
Right, because it's very...
Even with the change, if we pass this ordinance, and you, I mean, I think part of the thinking is that when you have somebody, when you have, part of what, at least how I see it, part of what makes the low barrier mildly more acceptable is that it's at night, it's, people are there to sleep, and they're not there throughout the day living lives, which is a little different than what we have going on at the encampment, where people are essentially, it's their home twenty-four hours a day for, for a few months.
But that's the way it is now. I, I'm trying to, to look and see if that could change in the future.
Right.
As problem increases. Councilmember Shrevnik, then Councilmember Smith.
And I actually think the difficulty we were having was not the indoor versus outdoor. So I, I guess I was hearing the difficulty we were having was the low barrier versus not low barrier and the, and the issue of background checks, whether people are indoor, outdoor, overnight or not. I mean, that was, that was the thing that seemed to get people most anxious. So, I, but I agree with you then, after the discussion, and I guess I had a little bit of a revelation, too, that by, you know, passing this, we would essentially put in limbo the issue of the low barrier shelters until we revisit that, which realistically, you know, hopefully would be in September. But, I mean, could even be, if, because we had talked about having King County out to do a presentation, you know, it could even extend longer. So, yeah, which of course would bring us into the time when people would be able to experience the low barrier shelter.
Would that be presented to us yet this month? Low barrier discussion? Do we have a meeting with everybody here? Issues attendance before?
Yeah.
But I'm waiting for that one. Because we can have all seven here this month, if that were possible. Because otherwise, we wait till September, then you're gone.
Yeah.
And it falls to our fearless leader.
You wouldn't want that to happen.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Is everybody here next week?
I do not know with, I know I am. I don't know about Councilmember Danuski.
But all of you are?
Yeah, this was the week that she was gone. I think next week she's there.
Okay, I think, I think, I think next week.
Next week's agenda is looking kind of light.
Let's make it a midnight meeting, then.
Well, could, I mean, could we ask a representative, I was, I'm serious, ask a representative from King County to either be on the phone or come? Because I think part of it is, you know, we're having difficulty with this concept, and to be able to, you know, really dig into some of the, the issues around background checks and trying to understand that a little bit better would be useful.
Councilmember Curtis?
To me, it seems like too big of a topic with too much contention to try to solve in a quick one week. But that's just a thought. Whenever we do discuss it, I think it'd be important to have that lady, and I can't remember her name, from the Lake City Group, because as I remember, it might be a low barrier to walk in the door, but there are in fact rules once you have walked through the door. And there were, it was, so I think we didn't have the full picture when we were having the discussion last night. So I think they need to be part of the discussion besides King County. And to get them and King County and everybody organized in one week just feels like it's, it's too much to expect to be done well.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I think, I think we lost track of where we were on this last discussion because what, why we split it apart is because we clearly agreed that there was a reasonable support for the policy that was basically presented this evening, but we clearly didn't agree on the low barrier aspect. And so the, the thought was, let's do the one that we know we can do so we can at least have the policy, and then we can have a more thoughtful, discerned discussion about what we want on the low barrier, whatever it is. And I frankly, I, I mean, I'm not in favor of the low barrier. So that's one of the reasons, it's like, well, let's, and it, clearly, I wasn't the only one that had questions about things. So it, to me, it didn't have, it had virtually nothing to do with outdoor or indoor because I think it's even possible you could have some that could be a combination of both that we don't even know. And so I don't, I think that's less relevant than the actual low barrier or no barrier, or, or they screamed.
Deputy Mayor.
I mean, as much as I'd like Jack to be here when we do this, I don't think that should be a deciding factor in when we're making policy. I would, I would just move that we push this off until September or even October. I don't think it'd be a bad idea for us to be able to go up there and take a look at it if we want to on our own and have that discussion when we can actually get all the stakeholders in here and get the information that we need to make an informed decision. So I would not be in favor of doing it next week.
Councilmember Marshall.
And for what it's worth, probably very little, my approach on the matter may be subject to some serious reconsideration. They're just different, different ideas, I suppose, of values of, you know, accepting folks as they are in their, in a, if they're inebriated and it's freezing outside versus what sort of, what is accepted, what sort of use is accepted, how would you know what, what people are using, et cetera? And a need to try to assist with law enforcement as a city rather than allowing folks with warrants. Is there a gradation between misdemeanor or felony warrants, et cetera? But at any rate, I have a bunch of questions, and somewhat different feeling than I had last time.
Okay, so, I guess we'll put that off on the low barrier. And are we in agreement to move forward with staff drawing up an ordinance for the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty, yeah. So it looks like we're in agreement, too. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable doing it now that we've, I've had more time to think about the fact that we'd be acting essentially on something.
Then let's go ahead and, and figure this out. Do we want staff to go ahead and draw up? Do we want staff to go ahead and draw up an ordinance for the 23rd? Clerk, take the role.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
No, and you didn't give an opportunity for questions because I do want them to do the ordinance, but not vote on it on the 23rd. Cause I, I want them to make the revisions, any revisions that we talked.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
So, it fails, 3-3.
Yep.
So, no ordinance.
May I have to, as if you want me to say something?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I thought maybe you wanted something else. Okay, Councilmember-
It seems like we should give the staff some direction. This is a non-direction.
It is a non-direction, I agree.
So, that's not what council should do, is give non-direction.
So, what kind of direction would you like to suggest with the motion?
I've got one, a few. I mean, I, I would move that we direct staff to come back with, uh, with this along with, um, along with the low barrier, um, ordinance together in September, October.
We haven't had a discussion on the low barrier that we can get an ordinance for yet.
Well, right, so we do a public hearing on whatever staff brings to us. And then, once we have that public hearing and we have agreements on that, then we would have the two of them together and we can move forward.
Okay. Councilmember Curtis?
My concern with that is we may have the same divisiveness we had before. This is an issue we pretty much all agree.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure what's hanging us up so much.
I'm not either.
If it's just the word outdoor, if that would solve it, I think we should take what we can, we've pretty much agreed on and finish something instead of finish nothing. Cause we could come back around, once we wrap it into one big, huge, major thing, we may not be able to solve it.
That's very true.
So, let's solve the piece we can solve would be my recommendation. And if we need to add the word outdoor, if that makes it more acceptable to the three of you who don't want to proceed, I don't care. It just seems like the last time we had a pretty good agreement on which direction to go for this piece. So, shall I try that?
I, 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 I agree with you. I'm just trying to figure out how we pass this without it essentially preempting action on something else. That, that's my only sticking point is figuring out how we do one without affecting the other in this ordinance.
We all thought we were doing one without the other and then we hear tonight that they're contingent upon each other. So, that's, that's where we're getting hooked.
But, but for this year, it's a non-issue.
You want any clarification?
In, in October, we've got it solved. We've already approved the low barrier. So, we don't have to do it till next year.
Let's hear if there's a resolution. I don't, I don't, I'm curious.
You could, you could adopt this ordinance you discussed tonight with a clause that says there's nothing to preclude, um, allowing low, you know, overnight shelters like we've been doing under a temporary use permit.
That'd work.
Yeah.
Mayor Baker? Mayor Baker?
That's what I thought we were doing, actually.
Uh, you could cer- uh, Councilmember Curtis could certainly make a motion to reconsider if he wanted something else to be done tonight. That, that's how you would-
Right.
Visit, uh, City Manager Carl Lindsay's comment, for example.
All right, let's try that. We've never done that one before. Let's do, cause, cause to give non-direction just doesn't feel like the right thing to do. So, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider this ordinance that we've been discussing on the, I don't remember the exact title.
It would be to reconsider the motion just passed.
The motion just passed. To add a clause that says-
The motion failed.
It would just be a motion to reconsider the motion just passed.
Okay, so we're just gonna make a motion to reconsider?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so that's just appearance of-
So, there's a motion to reconsider?
Mayor Baker knows how to do this.
I know how to do.
Deputy Mayor was conversing with me about this update, so.
Yeah, so there's a motion to reconsider, um-
Do we need a second?
With the addition of, what, what did you say?
No, Mayor Baker?
Yes?
This will be a motion to reconsider. I believe, I don't have the, my little teaching, but I believe it requires a second.
I have my little teaching on the motion to reconsider.
Yeah, it requires a second.
Isn't it a motion to reconsider, period?
Period.
Is period? Okay, so, there's a motion on the table, motion to reconsider and I'll second that. Okay, now we have a motion and a second.
And we're gonna vote on that.
And after we vote on this, then we're going to vote to amend?
Then, then we can talk about what we want to add to it.
If the motion passes.
Yeah, two separate steps.
Okay.
Okay, so it's reconsidering.
So, the motion, the reconsider motions, okay, gotcha. So, there's motion to reconsider. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes. All right, now, we are reconsidering. So, the motion that was before us to have staff prepare an ordinance for the July 23rd meeting, subject to-
Yeah, so you could direct us to come back with what you discussed tonight, with, but with a clause that says, um, this still allows for low barrier overnight shelters, indoor shelters, uh, under a temporary use permit as we've been doing in the past.
Yeah, it doesn't preclude, doesn't preclude. I don't know if we want to say allow.
I don't think we want to say allow.
Okay, yeah.
Doesn't preclude.
Doesn't preclude, like I said originally, yeah. That works.
Clerk, do you have that?
Hold on, hold on.
Doesn't preclude.
So, there are downsides to that. So, right now, could the downside, what?
You're gonna buy it back.
I don't care. A downside is, there's no limit under those. You can just keep getting them.
Yep. So, it'll force us to act and like-
Okay.
Consider the motion. I don't know, it's, sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. Any, any discussion? Are, are we clear that the passage of the motion to have staff bring back an ordinance for, for the 23rd does not preclude indoor shelters?
Low barrier.
I'd say indoor overnight low barrier.
Yeah, indoor overnight low barrier shelters. Councilmember Smith?
Well, I have a question and that is, um, why is it, how, how is it not possible that we can't pass this and then come back later with a different ordinance that addresses the issues we talked about a month ago in a low barrier one? That, and, and does it in a way that con- conforms with this ordinance that we discussed earlier this evening? How, I, I don't understand why they're not, why they're incompatible. If you pass one and you just pass another one later on that addresses additional items and you make it complimentary in a way to the first one, why, why is that not legal or possible?
It's possible, but I think the fear is that you'll never get to that second ordinance. And then, then, uh, then the low barrier one would be excluded.
So, if we're all convinced we want to do it then, if that's the, then it makes no sense to have this in this ordinance. I mean, I, I just, so if we, if, if the will is to do it, then we'll do it in two months or whatever. But if the will isn't there, then it won't happen. I, I don't understand why we need to water this ordinance down with language that addresses something that the whole point of, of this coming to us in the first place was, so we had a policy addressing this, not working on, um, temporary basis for the rest of-
I think it's a cl- clarification. I mean, there are multiple people that did, were not able to, including really myself, although I knew what our intent was, that was not able to make the distinction between what we were saying here and the, and the other kinds of shelter. So, it, it's sort of distinguishing what this addresses and what it doesn't. And says, you know, if you have this other kind of shelter, this isn't the policy for you. This isn't what you should be looking at. It's simply not addressed by this policy. So, I guess that's what, how I'm hearing that clause.
It is addressed because it's addressed in the fact that you can come back on a temporary basis and make application for a low-
No, you can't. I mean, that's, I think that was Rob, I mean, that's what I heard Rob saying is that because of the specificity of this, that it is the only homeless shelter policy that we have, anybody coming in for a homeless shelter, application of any kind, would look to this policy and would be subject to this policy.
Oh, right. I was, I was saying it would with his amendment, but you're absolutely right. I think that's, and that's, I think that's what we decided we wanted to bring to us was a policy that addressed what we knew was temporary housing issues. And, and then we would come back to the low barrier issue later. And I, I, I see nothing inconsistent with what, where we're headed on this. And I just, I don't understand why we want to throw in this verbiage about now being able to do something, you know, on a temporary basis.
And the, the way I see this now is by putting this verbiage in, a low barrier shelter can be permitted. That means I'm back to the original thing that we have people coming in to spend the night in town without a warrant check, carrying weapons with alcohol and drugs. Sorry, I, you know, I just, I can't support that. Deputy Mayor?
Except it'd be under the old temporary use permit that we did for the previous one, which had to come before council. This isn't just an outright staff permit for that. This would be putting it under the previous rules.
Wasn't there a decision that we can't, with a, a religious organization, we can't deny that?
Correct. It's a statute.
Yeah, it's a statute.
However, you, we can impose conditions related to public health and safety according to the statute.
Yeah.
By this ordinance is primarily conditions for temporary use permit approval.
And if it's less than 90 days, it's staff level approval. More than 90, it goes to council.
Well, the previous 30-day one came to us, didn't it? Last year's October shelter?
I'm pretty sure we approved it. I think you guys approved the grant, I believe.
Yeah. And to, to go to Councilmember Smith's point, I would say the body, I would say the will wasn't there to pass it without the added language though. So, this gets us, this takes care of the one part that we all agreed on and puts aside the other part that makes us come back. Whereas, there's a chance if we did it-
Come back, we did?
Well, we're, we're gonna come back. There's a chance that if we went forward with it the way it was, that it never comes back and then we by default made a decision on something that we decided as a body, we were gonna come back and talk about when all seven of us were here. And we haven't had that opportunity yet, so.
But I also see this as us passing this, there's a chance it would never come back to us and we would be have this one.
I think this makes it, I think this makes it come back to us.
See that.
Rob will follow our direction.
If, if, so is there actually a motion on the table right now? And what is the motion specifically?
Motion is to pass the ordinance with the addition that-
You made it, but I didn't have a second.
I can't make it.
Or somebody, you stated it.
Mayor Baker, I might recollect some.
I think Councilmember Curtis made it.
I don't think so.
Reconsider.
That was a motion to reconsider. Okay, so, we don't have a-
Mayor Baker, I don't think we have a motion because I think you suggested it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I would make a motion then, if, since it's under reconsideration, I would make a motion that we, um, uh, we pass the ordinance that was presented with the provision that it's, that verbiage specifically states it's indoor and outdoor. And so that there's no gray area there. So, this is a temporary homeless shelter policy for indoor, exterior or interior use.
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. So, this motion then is to bring forward an ordinance for consideration on the 23rd, dealing with temporary shelters, both indoor and outdoor. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
I'm gonna vote against. This is going completely against what we were discussing previously. We wanted to come back to the area of low bar, the issue of low barrier indoor as a body. We haven't had that opportunity yet. This would, this is going the exact opposite direction of what we were discussing just a minute ago, so I'm against it.
Councilmember Smith?
I would vote for it because I think it moves us in the direction we intended by having this issue come up in the first place. And then, it allows us to go and have a discussion with more information on the low barrier side. We can do whatever we need to, to go through our diligence process on that. But this at least gets us three quarters of the way there and, and it's a solid policy. It makes sense. And it's everything we talked about the last time that everybody felt like they wanted.
Anybody else? Any more discussion questions? All right, so the motion before us then is to draft an ordinance that includes indoor, outdoor temporary shelters to be brought back to us for the 23rd. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
All right. Staff report.
Yeah, so that's without that clause I was talking about, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Nothing, Your Honor?
Councilmember, reports, comments, initiatives. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Marshall?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Curtis?
I did the nature walk at Wallace Swamp Creek Park today and it was great. We learned about birds that, uh, I'd never heard of before and it was, just, it's a wonderful park. You need to go walk that sometime. So, just encourage people to do that.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Nothing, except I just want to make one last pitch for the comedy and nonprofit fundraiser this Wednesday at the Kenmore Community Club.
Um, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, unfortunately, I won't be able to make it to that because I'm gonna be in Canada, so I was kind of bummed when I saw that got scheduled. Yeah, and I'm missing the movie too. It's, it's, uh, I was supposed to do the emceeing at the mo, well, I wasn't supposed to, but I was asked to and I had to beg off because I'll be in a foreign country, so. It still counts. It's only ferry right away, but it still counts, anyway.
Um, last week, I had the pleasure of, uh, presenting awards at the Special Olympics. I got to, uh, to, uh, present the awards for the bowling that happened here in Kenmore. I got the, um, the honor of presenting, uh, volleyball awards. And, um, there was which one, there was one other that I did. Anyway, I was there all three days presenting awards and it was really, really interesting. Those kids are pretty amazing, I'll tell you. I was very glad that I had the opportunity to participate. Congresswoman Del Benny was here for the small business and I know there are a couple of you got, people were here. I had the opportunity of spending 15, 20 minutes with her after the meeting to talk about some issues with the city. Some, uh, future money down the road for dredging. The channel after the dred, the dredge analysis was done. And then also talked about, uh, perhaps some money for brownfields and that with, um, Lake Point, uh, for the public part of that, of that project. So, all in all, it was a really good meeting. It's always a pleasure, uh, meeting with her. She's, she really cares about Kenmore. She cares about her district as a whole, so it's always enjoyable meeting with her. Upcoming meetings, the 16th, the 23rd, and a special meeting on the 30th. And I'm sure there will be one special one, um, thrown in in the middle of August for check approval, but, uh, I'm sure that'll come up at a later date.
Yeah, so, that's just for the newer council members. You take August off with one two-minute exception. You, you need to sometime during that month, just have a quick stand-up 30-second meeting where you approve bills. Cause we need to keep, keep, uh, our vendors paid.
And it only requires four of us to be available, so.
And if you're two minutes late, you missed the meeting.
You did, seriously, it's that fast, it's over.
And, uh, and please keep the 30th on your calendar for now for a special meeting, but that there's, but there's a chance we won't have it. We wanted to have a Lake Point meeting, but we're not, we may not be ready for the 30th for Lake Point. So, but keep it on your calendar for now.
All right. All right, none of the further visits come before us, we are adjourned.